Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 3rd, 2014 meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Bennerott.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hubland?
Here. We have a meeting agenda in front of us, and there is something missing from the agenda, and that is under Special Recognitions and Presentations. We have with us the newly reformed, and we'll find out after how many years, Edina Wrestling Team. And their coach, Josh Burhans, is going to speak with us. So would somebody make that addition to the agenda by motion?
So moved.
Got a motion, a second, to add under Special Recognitions and Presentations a presentation by the Edina Wrestling Team. With that addition, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And then the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, E., please.
Which one?
E.
All right. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I, J under the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second, to approve all of the consent agenda items with the exception of item E. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And now, item E. Member Sprague.
Thank you, Your Honor. Director Milner, on the second paragraph of the within letter, WSB states, "Some of the work associated with the proposal has already been completed." What has been completed within the scope and what is remaining to be completed?
Tasks one and two have been completed. The additional, we tried to fit that under the original contract, and it took more stakeholder engagement from the businesses. And task three is partially completed because they just got done completing the installation of the plants and lights.
Okay, so the rest is administration and maintenance?
Correct.
Thank you. With that clarification, I'll move this item.
All right, we've got a motion, a second, on four E. All right, we've got a, and discussion? All those in favor of approving four E., which is the authorizing authorization for engineering services for the design and construction inspection of lighting and landscaping components on the France Avenue improvements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Now, we are going to move to the Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. Coach Burhans, why don't you come on up and tell us what's happened in Edina? I know that we had a shared team with Richfield, and so this is the first year we've been separated from Richfield, and it's exciting to see you guys all here. And so eager to hear more about it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the time tonight. Very, very exciting time for Edina Wrestling. My name is Josh Burhans. I'm a teacher at Valley View Middle School, as well as the head wrestling coach. Just to give you a little brief history about the program, the last Edina-only wrestling team was around 1994, so it's been about 20 years. And since then, we've had a couple on and off co-ops with Richfield High School, which have been a great relationship. We've just been able to kind of grow numbers over the past few years, and we feel like both schools are now at a point where we can sustain two programs instead of combining to make one. A couple other things that's going on is we, in addition to the high school team, we're also forming a youth and middle school program. The middle school program's underway and currently has 16 athletes on it, so we're really working on those feeder programs as well, so that we can hopefully sustain this for years to come. And this has been done with a lot of hard work from our wrestlers, our wrestlers' parents, and a lot of support from the school administration, so we're very thankful for that. Next, I just wanted to make you aware of a couple upcoming events that we have going on. Next Tuesday, November 11th, from 6:30 to 8:30, our captains' parents are hosting an open house at Dan and Marcia Hunt's. And this is just a time where you can come, enjoy some food, some good company, and learn a little bit more about the program that we have coming. The next event is next Thursday, the 13th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. One of our wrestling parents owns Rosie Posey Boutique, which I think is located over by Snuffy's. And from 7:00 to 9:00, any sale, she's donating 20% back to the program. And then lastly, we are hosting two home events this year at Edina High School, and that'll take place in the main gym. The first date is December 16th, and that's a 5:00 p.m. start. And the second date is February 5th, and that's a 6:00 p.m. start. So if you're interested, we would love to invite anybody to come out, take in a high school wrestling match, kind of see what it's all about. So again, we are, we're very excited for this upcoming season. We've been working hard of just getting the word out and letting people know that we have this newly formed program. And some of the people behind that are these gentlemen behind me, and I'm going to introduce them now and have them, one of them's going to say a few words as well from a student perspective. So these are our 2014, 2015 wrestling captains. Senior Sam Bencowski. Senior Michael Carlson. Junior Devon Hunt. Senior Noah Sawatsky. And Senior Hayden Bosvik. And Devon's going to say a few words as well.
I'm Devon Hunt, and I just want to start off saying thank you for inviting us. And I think we're really excited for this new year. My past two years wrestling, the Richfield-Edina co-op wrestling team, I've made a lot of great friends from Richfield, but I'm just really excited for having our own team, not having to transport from Edina right after school, zip over to Richfield every day. So it'll be nice to stay in-house. Also, practices will be starting at 4:00, so that allows me to lift beforehand. So that's something new that we're starting this year. And yeah, we're just really excited for this new season.
Good, thanks. Other of the folks want to comment at all? No? I think we, do we have a camera? Let's memorialize the start of this new era here, so I'll walk down and we'll gather up here and we'll take a photo of all you guys.
Must be early in the season, guys, because I don't see a lot of mat burns yet, so.
Can I squeeze a little bit more? Okay, there we go.
This could be late. All right. We're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have two public hearing matters this evening, and the second one, which involves the sidewalk facilities, we're going to talk a little bit about that before we start that public hearing. But the first matter in front of us this evening, Director Teague has, which is a request for a teardown rebuild, front yard setback, and a first-floor rule on teardown rebuilds. It's an ordinance, potential ordinance change. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is an ordinance amendment that the Planning Commission has been working on over the past several months. There's a couple items that were brought to the council's attention under community comment in regard to our front yard setback and the one-foot rule for teardown rebuilds, response to that, also at the advice of our city attorney, and then a couple of items that have been on the, in the Planning Commission's bucket list for zoning ordinance amendment for the past several years, so we thought we would add them to this. So there are four topics here within this one ordinance. The first deals with our front street setback, the second, the one-foot rule for teardown rebuilds, and also the process that we go through when we review those types of requests. The third is the minimum and maximum unit size for multifamily housing, and the fourth portion of the ordinance is in regard to lighting. So the first topic, front street setback. We have three options for, the language that's on the screen is the existing ordinance, and we have three options for establishing a required front street setback. The first deals with if you have an abutting property on just one side of the lot. The second is if there are two abutting properties adjacent on either side, and then the third option is if, the first two don't apply, you take the average of the front street setback of all the homes on a block. The problem that we've run into under that current ordinance is for corner lots. And it talks about the intent here, if you look at this corner lot, is the front street setback would be established by simply matching this property. However, there are abutting lots. These properties on this street are still abutting that property. So the literal interpretation of the code is you would average the front street setback from these homes that are actually abutting to that corner lot. Might be a better example, a more traditional corner lot. The front street setback on this street is established by taking the average of this property and this property. So the language before the council this evening, the goal is to straighten that out. So what we're proposing and recommended by the Planning Commission, if there's an existing dwelling on an abutting lot on only one side of the lot, and we've added the language that's in red and yellow that has a front street setback on the same street. So if we go back to our examples, we're following what our intent was years ago when we amended the ordinance, that the front street setback for this one labeled "one" would be established by simply matching the property adjacent on the same street.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You don't have this as an example, but we've had some situations where a house is built early, early on in the area, and maybe it's the original farmhouse or whatever it is, and it's really far back. And that would be the only abutting lot on that, and it would not be a reasonable place to build. I think we saw one on Grove more recently that if the house next door got torn down, there would be no buildable space if we had to go with that. Why don't we go back to the average, then, along that road? Because you have four houses that would recreate an average that might be more reasonable than just, you know, and two looks reasonable looking at it today, but if it was built in the backyard, which occasionally we have houses that are, then what happens? We just had a house on Tracy that was built way far back in its lot, on a new subdivided lot, and the house on the corner could go down tomorrow, and it wouldn't match the house next door, but it could hit the average for the block. So it seems to me when we're only, when we only have one house like this that we're pinning everything to, that we, in essence, create other problems.
And that's an excellent point, and we have run into that with the Planning Commission. We've seen an increase in the number of variances when we run into that situation where there's a house that's set quite a bit further back, so we've seen an increase in the amount of variances previous to the, either being one, two, or three. The average of the block was an option, so.
And I know the Planning Commission has discussed that as a possibility. They didn't bring it forward in this particular draft, but it would seem to me that that might be a way of protecting ourselves from having a lot of different variances and things.
It would. It would, it would give people.
Because it would seem to me that people would have a reasonable, should have a reasonable ability to rebuild a house on a corner lot if they take down the existing one.
Staff would agree with that. That would, we would see that as a benefit.
Okay.
Member Swenson, you're harkening back to, I think, to the, I think it's Oaklawn experience where Dick.
It's Brookview.
Brookview?
But in that instance, there was a third method, and it was the third method, I think, that was so problematic because it was the language that was used to describe setting up a line that was perpendicular with the street when your conditions didn't allow you to have a line that, or the parallel, rather, parallels on the street.
Right, it was a misinterpretation of.
And they built where the code really didn't allow them to.
Didn't, yeah.
No, so I didn't want to use that example. I wanted to use examples where.
But that old farmhouse is an example of what you're talking about, which is a great example.
Yes.
And it would allow for a varied, a little, maybe some variation in streetscape, but without, but without too wide a range of variation.
Shaker Road was another good example.
It was, the corner of Shaker Road and Lake.
Yeah.
It's the garage.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I just remember it was on Shaker.
To add to that Brookview scenario, that was at the time when you could take the average on the block, but even taking the average on the block, that house still didn't meet the front street setback. So the second topic is the one-foot rule for teardown rebuilds. That's where if you tear a home down, the new home, the first floor elevation of the new home can't exceed the old home by more than one foot. And the second part of that is the process in how we regulate those. So the language that we're looking at is highlighted in red, and the problem with it, where the current language is, if a split-level dwelling is torn down and a new home built, the new first floor or entry level elevation may not be more than one foot above the front entry elevation of the home that was torn down. So the intent of that was for us to be taking this front entry as the elevation of that home to be torn down. However, when you look at that language, we don't define front entry elevation. So really, the garage is a front entry elevation. So it could be interpreted that the new home can't be more than one foot above that garage elevation, just another example of a split level. So the language that's proposed, we're striking that last sentence in adding, "The first-floor elevation of a dwelling unit being torn down is deemed to be the lowest elevation of an entrance to the dwelling excluding the entrance to the garage and entrances that do not face the street."
So on a multi-level split, where there's a mezzanine in the top, it'd be the mezzanine?
Would take the lowest, correct.
Is the definition of an entrance to the garage, are you trying to say that it's only the garage door and not a service door next to it?
If that door leads to the garage, we wouldn't take that elevation, but if it leads to living space or some type of hallway, then it would.
Okay.
So the second part of that is, as you may recall, when we created this condition, right now it's a conditional use permit for any new home that exceeds that first-floor elevation by one foot. And the reason that we did that was back in the time of the Krumenacher lawsuit, where we couldn't process variances. So the conditional use permit was a way to allow people to still proceed. We had some floodplain issues where people needed to bring their home more than a foot above the first-floor elevation. So we created this conditional use permit process to address that issue. Since that time, we can now process variances, and the Planning Commission is recommending that we go back to processing those types of use through a variance and not a conditional use. Some of the standard, or all of the standards that we established as part of that conditional use permit process would be simply moved into the variance, so we're still enforcing those same conditions. Actually, a variance gives the city more discretion than a conditional use permit would in terms of just the process itself.
And just for clarity, the Krumenacher lawsuit was a Minnetonka lawsuit that the Supreme Court made a decision on, not an Edina lawsuit, but it meant that there were no variances given for the period until variances could be redefined by the state legislature, correct?
That's correct. All cities in Minnesota couldn't process variances.
Right.
The third topic is in regard to minimum and maximum unit size for multifamily housing. This is an item that's been left over. It's what we called in the bucket list of the Planning Commission for items that we want to address. Currently, city code has a minimum and a maximum for apartments. We believe that the intent of this was to promote affordable housing. However, in a lot of the developments that we're seeing, they meet these standards, but it's not creating affordable housing. And I apologize, I didn't include, as Councilmember Bennett pointed out today, I didn't provide any minutes before you that got into that discussion. It was quite some time ago, and we tried to dig those up, but I wasn't able to come up with them today. But this is first reading of the ordinance, and so when this comes back for second reading, I should have that background.
Councilmember Bennett?
Couple of questions. So actually, the minimum and the maximum only for PSR, correct? And the, and the minimum is for, so it's senior housing for which there's a minimum and a maximum? And years ago, you sent me the minutes from the 1980s when the, with, they were, that code was being adopted, and it appeared that what the council then was trying to accomplish was a sweet spot between livability, preventing units that were too small to be lived in, and affordability with a cap. With the plant, with just multi-unit building, it's just the minimum, correct?
That's correct.
And I don't think I've ever seen minutes on that, but I would imagine it was for some standard of livability? And then also, there was a percentage limit on the number of efficiency units that could be built within a planned unit development?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, it might be useful to know about that. Also, what are the other, what were the compensating benefits? So there was that size limitation or the sweet spot for the units in plan senior, but from the code, it appears that there were some benefits then for developers as kind of a quid pro quo. For instance, fewer parking spaces were required for senior housing than for regular multi-unit housing?
That's right.
Okay, and there was also, were there any other differences in the code?
Yeah, parking was the big one. I can't recall.
Any difference in density or lot coverage?
There are differences in density depending on, you know, we have the different levels of PRD zoning districts. There's the PRD 1, 2, and 3, so the higher the number, the more density that's allowed.
Thank you.
But we'll have more information for that on second reading.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, Carrie, could you define PSR for people for whom that's new?
Oh, certainly. That's planned senior residential districts, where only senior housing would be allowed in that district. A lot of the developments that we're seeing are coming through as part of a PUD, so that section of the code hasn't necessarily been applying lately anyway with our projects. The fourth item is in regard to lighting, and this is what we're calling Phase 1. We compared our lighting standards to other cities, and we allow a lot of light out there in our commercial zoning districts, so we thought we should bring it more in-line, actually more on the, on the more restrictive end when compared to other cities. So we're suggesting the foot candle measurement, which is the measure of light, to have property lines be reduced, from three-foot candles down to a half a foot candle when property abuts residential, and from 10 down to one when measuring at the street. So the second part of the lighting ordinance will be much more detailed in regard to primarily commercial development. So with that, I can stand for any questions. Staff and the Planning Commission are recommending this on first reading.
Member Swenson?
I have kind of a slight off-topic question, but it's still part of this. So in Section 36.1, the special setback requirements for single-dwelling unit lots, one of the other issues that keeps coming up is see that interior side yard setback and the issue of bringing in fill to measure that after the house has been built. So my question is, have you had any discussion about that and a way to clarify that a little bit better?
Yeah, we haven't in any specific detail, but we have recognized that that is an issue. The way we measure, the way we measure that on the side is different from the front, where we measure from existing grade, and it's from the new grade on the side. So that is something that we've added to our list of.
Well, and I've just noticed houses that have a slant towards the back or have a walkout will often then, you know, to comply with our setback rules and our height rules, at the end of the time when the house is built, will bring in fill to make that measure qualify.
That is true.
And if there's a way to improve upon that, I think we should.
Point well taken.
Thank you. And how, if we pass this on first reading, though, how would we, I'd like to get some feedback from the Planning Commission on that concept of that average street setback with more than just the house next door. I don't know how my other council member feels about that, so I would ask for some input on that before we go to public hearing.
Member Sprague?
I think that's a good idea as well, to at least have that optional bind on, since the situation seems to be coming up more and more. We're just changing the proportion of, is it as of right versus going to variance, and you raise a valid point.
Member, Member Brindle?
And the, the very tough piece of allowing a home to be raised because of a water table issue, and there are, for those of you in the audience, and it's probably more than you want to know, but there is, if you have a water table issue, your basement has to be a certain amount above that dictated by the watershed district and then another restriction dictated by the city, so your home stays dry. And that could result in raising your front door threshold. And of course, you want your front yard to meet your front yard, your front door threshold, so what do you do? You end up raising the grade of your lot. And what does that do? It causes water issues for your neighbors. So the grade is a piece that while, I don't know if it fits in here, but I feel like it should, that we really should be sensitive to what we're doing and the stormwater, or referencing the stormwater tools that need to be put in place if, in fact, a grade has to be raised to fit that house where it now needs to be.
At the, at the front, we're still measuring height from the existing grade? So that's still going to dictate the overall height of the house, but it's a good point in regard to the grade, and that is, that's the next ordinance that the Planning Commission intends to bring before the council, is a tighter ordinance in regard to grading and drainage.
Yeah, because it is something we have to watch closer than we're watching. There are some really good examples out there, so. All right, thank you.
Member Bennett?
And to return to that issue of, of raising the grade for just an instance, for just a second, most of the requests that we're seeing are actually not as much related to the floodplain as they're related to basement height, I think, and the ones that I've seen come forward?
Yeah, the ones that have been coming forward lately, that is the, one of the reasons. Yeah, we're not seeing so much of the water issues like we did when we first adopted that ordinance.
And the reason for the ordinance in the first place, as I recall, in 2007 adoption of it, was that we were, both Southwest Minneapolis and Edina were experiencing the raising of lots for convenience when someone wanted to create a higher basement ceiling, but not dig the foundation down and deal with some utility issues. And off, and sometimes, particularly in small lot neighborhoods, that would have the first story of the new home looking into the second story of the homes adjacent to it. So I think it was to address that imbalance in the streetscape and the.
That was.
Great heights that some people wanted to go to, and that was the one-height limitation. And the Planning Commission is recommending carrying forward the careful language that we used around the time of Krumenacher with respect to involving the hydrologist and the other professionals for water issues.
Yep, that's right. That's right.
Correct, thank you.
Let's talk a little bit more about that hydrology issue. The proposed language, I guess it's carry-forward language, "Existing and potential groundwater elevation shall be determined in accordance with accepted hydrologic and hydraulic engineering practices. Determination shall be undertaken by a professional civil engineer licensed under Minnesota statute Chapter 326 or a hydrologist certified by the American Institute of Hydrology." Have we had any issues arise with respect to a homeowner or a builder or developer hiring a hydrologist where we have a difference of opinion with them? Because this, this language causes me to think about the technique that we use with traffic studies, and that is that a developer has to provide a traffic study in a commercial setting, but we hire the traffic engineer and they pay for the traffic engineer, and therefore they're working for the city. I see some of that same sort of, or at least a hint of that same sort of challenge here, where the homeowner or the builder or the developer could hire the hydrologist and pay for the opinion that they, that they want, or get the opinion that they, that they want, and it may not necessarily be consistent with one that we would, that we would render if we were using a hydrologist of our choice. Are we, are we having any issues there?
We haven't. We haven't run into any issues. In, in hiring that, the homeowner, it's really for their own good. They want to make sure they, that they know what they're getting into with the soils there, so they want to make sure that that's right.
Okay.
We haven't, haven't run across any, any issues with that yet.
So you see no need for us to be hiring the hydrologist if someone wants that done and they pay for it?
I don't. Our engineering department hasn't raised any red flags for questionable findings.
That's the only question I had for you. This is a public hearing, and we're on first reading. Is there anyone in the, I'm going to open this matter now up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the, I'm going to open this matter now up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and, and comment or make an inquiry to the council with regard to the proposed changes in the ordinance that have been discussed by Director Teague? And please give us your phone name and address, and you'll have three minutes, and you'll get a 30-second warning light, a yellow warning light.
Thank you.
You want to hand, you'll need a handheld microphone, and I think you can move that keyboard out of the way.
Thank you. I didn't plan to speak, but I just want to make a couple of comments. Thank you very much. Lori Groetz, 5513 Park Place.
No.
Is it on? Now it is? Okay. Lori Groetz, 5513 Park Place. I attended the Planning Commission meeting when they were talking about the changes, and I spoke there. I just wanted to make a couple of comments here about if there are just two houses for the setback, and one is a corner, or two are corners. There's very few of those in the city that Mr. Teague had gone through. He had a map where he outlined them. Comment I wanted to make was two, here's an example right here. A corner lot here and a corner lot here. This one is set back more, 46 feet. There's only two houses here. However, if you take the buildable footprint, this is the lot that was highlighted in yellow right here. If you take the buildable footprint, the buildable footprint on this, when it lines up to the neighbor that sets back farther, you still have a footprint of 3,045 square feet. So a person could easily build a house 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. So at least the ones that I've seen here on the map, if there are just two houses that are next to each other, most of, and one is setback, they generally have a pretty large-size lot. And if you didn't require them to line up with it, then it's going to default to the 30-foot rule that we have, and now you're going to have a house that might be turned or pulled forward, and now you've got one that's going to be 16 feet in front of the other one. So I would say, since there are so few houses, I think that planning's done a good job in writing this. So if there needed to be any type of variances, it would be very few. If you decide to send it back to the Planning Commission, when it comes back to the council, could we have a public hearing on that again so that we might have opportunity to put input? And I also agree with the one-foot rule, if you could include the side yards for those houses that have a deep foundation on the side, because builders are bringing up the grade five feet and then just slanting it down to the neighboring property and running the water down, so. But with 3,000 square feet for a footprint, plenty of room for a big house there, I think. So I don't think it's really a hardship. Thank you for your time. I hadn't planned to speak, but thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Ms. Groetz.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this particular matter?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pause, say nay. Carrie?
Yeah, I know, Ms. Groetz.
Hit a point for that one lot, but we had five lots in Rolling Green alone that we had problems with front yard setbacks because neighboring houses were set very far back on the lots, if you remember. We had an issue in Indian Hills with setback because of where houses were, one that was really close to the street, so we actually asked where they preferred the house that would go on the lot next to them. So it isn't, and while I agree 3,000 square feet is certainly a nice house, I don't think we have just a few. I think we would be surprised at actually how many we potentially have.
Member Bennett.
Thank you. When we were considering zoning changes more in a group in 2007, staff modeled what things would look like with one application of code and then with code revised. I would like to see the impact of, I know that staff has provided some examples for this, but if we go to an average of homes on the block, whether it's one home, two homes, or six homes on the block, I'd like to see what that impact would be. And I know that, I know the examples you speak of in Indian Hills and Rolling Green, so those may be good ones, in addition to maybe with a more gridded streetscape.
They're on the back.
Yeah, on the back, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for that comment. Director Teague, you're making notes on this, I think. If the council's inclined to grant this first reading, we could deal with these issues that have been raised tonight between first and second reading. So do we have a motion with regard to granting first reading of the attached ordinance?
I'll move this.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to grant first reading of the ordinance changes for ordinance number 2014-18 as recommended by the Planning Commission with the guidance that we give in Director Teague with respect to some of the outstanding issues. Any further discussion on this matter? All right. Let's see, first, it's a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pause, say nay. Carrie? All right. One other matter that we have this evening for public hearing, have a little bit of a discussion about it before we start with the public hearing. I see a lot of folks that have shown up, and I don't think it's for community comment or the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda that we'll have later on. But it's the sidewalk plan that's been proposed, and we've all had quite a few emails from people in different quadrants of the town. One thought that I had, and this was based on a conversation we had with neighbors over in the Valley View neighborhood a couple of weeks ago. The city has this vision of creating multi, a multi-faceted transportation system that includes both motorized and non-motorized methods of getting around. And the council and the neighbors over in the Valley View neighborhood had what I would call a real disconnect in, in, in what they, what they saw as what would be good for that particular neighborhood. Didn't leave any of us with a very good feeling. Then this sidewalk plan surfaced, and a lot of folks started writing in saying this was the first time we've had a chance to, to hear about this and weigh in on it and had concerns about sidewalks, whether they were over in the neighborhood where we had a pending street reconstruction project we were going to relet, which we had decided not to put sidewalks in. Those sidewalks were back in the plan. Over in the Cornelia neighborhood on West Shore Drive, Maddox Lane, concerns in a variety of different places. So one thing I was thinking about that we could potentially do to have a better way of communicating with folks, other than the ways that we've done, would be to postpone this matter for a month and give us a chance to go out into the, into the city, into the various quadrants, into the four quadrants, and have neighborhood meetings about some of these issues that are pending. So folks could hear from policymakers like us or folks from the Edina Transportation Commission about what the vision is, what some of the folks were telling us in our community survey we did recently about park and rec needs where people want more ability to walk, both with respect to trails and sidewalks, some of the work we're doing now in the visioning for Edina. And then folks could also tell us what some of their concerns are with respect to potential sidewalks on the sidewalk plan in their particular part of town. That way, we've got kind of a full dialogue, you know? We may agree to agree or agree to disagree at the end of the day, but we've got a more thorough process where we've, we've had a chance to really vet this, these ideas through each quadrant of town. So this doesn't mean that you can't testify tonight if you're here, or it's been noticed up as a public hearing, but at least I wanted to run this idea by our council members because I think all of us got left with kind of a funny feeling after that last experience a couple of weeks ago where folks in the neighborhood didn't want sidewalks, and we thought it was a good idea to put them in, and we voted to put them in, along with some other non-motorized improvements. So my colleagues, your thoughts on what, Member Swenson, what we ought to do here?
I don't mind using that theory, but I think a couple of points of clarity. We've had a sidewalk plan in our comprehensive plan for the last eight years and one in the one before that, so this isn't that this is brand-new. I just, you may, it be brand-new for the people here in their realization of what it is, but, and that doesn't mean that we need to vote on it tonight, but I just, I want people to know that this isn't something that we just came up with in the last two months and you're now surprised by it. And two, that we've done this in a reaction to a lot of the surveys and information that we've gotten over the last number of years. It's not just because one survey came back a month ago and said that people, 97% by far, wanted trails and sidewalks. That's been a repeated piece of information that's come back. And the other thing is, yes, it was tough to vote last week on a sidewalk on Valley View, but they had petitioned for one five years earlier. So while I would enjoy hearing everyone speak tonight, I do want everyone to understand that this isn't something that we're just dropping out of the clouds.
Just to echo that point, we have, we, we work to achieve standalone funding through the pedestrian and cyclist safety fund. That was an endeavor that preceded the Living Streets policy, soon to be the Living Streets Plan. We had the two quality-of-life survey results. We have the recent park needs survey results. We have already passed the Active Routes to School Plan. So this has been a long iterative process, and I don't think there's any, any question about the direction the city is headed in. I'm sure that some people will have questions, especially where they were in a project area that, where sidewalks did not pass, and now they see them on the plan. That's legitimate. We want to hear their feedback, and I think many of them are here tonight, and my recommendation would, would be to go ahead with the public hearing as noticed. Take that, that month to take additional feedback. We've done this in the past with other issues. And then come to a final decision at that first meeting in December. So here are the staff report tonight. He'll give us more, more of the history and the foundation for each of the sidewalks and the sidewalk plan itself, and then take the public hearing, and then we can, we can delay the final decision until December.
Member Bennett and Member Brindle?
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues, Swenson and Sprague, and note that over the years of street reconstructions, we have been in a more voting standpoint that this is the project, and because residents are going to be assessed for it, we want to know what they consider to be of value and what they don't, and take that into consideration as much as we can. We also know that as a community, we have both older and younger members, more people in strollers, some people on walkers, and we know that there is a community-wide call that we've seen in the quality-of-life surveys now in 2011 and 2013, in addition to this new needs survey, that people are calling for a network of sidewalks that they can use to move around the city, not only to businesses and commercial establishments, but for exercise and for wellness and for health. We also know, we also have tried to address some of the specific concerns, such as the payment issue, and took that, in the past, sidewalks on state aid streets have been paid for out of state aid funds, so those sidewalks along busier roadways were not assessed to adjacent residents, but sidewalks on quieter streets were. And now we have made community-wide the funding for sidewalks, which I think is really important since it's part of a community-wide transportation network. Finally, we have, yes, we want to take people's concerns into consideration. I think we might have some more work to do on that. I think maintenance is an important issue. I know that's been raised by several people. Different communities are doing different things with that, and I'd like to see the Transportation Commission and staff work on that issue of what we can do with maintenance. We do maintain the sidewalks on the state aid streets. We maintain the routes to school. What does it look like if we maintain community-wide as we do the rest of our transportation system, all of our roadways? And I, understanding that that's a cost, but there is a cost to maintaining a transportation system that again serves all users. And finally, with respect to public input, we've had public input in those decision resources or quality-of-life surveys. We've had public input in this park needs survey, in fact, twice as much response as was hoped for and anticipated. Over 1,200 surveys returned. And we also had community participation in that active or safe routes to school program, the development of that plan, which is required, by the way. We know we've missed out on state funding in the past because we didn't have that plan. We have that plan now. That has helped us identify routes and, okay, so two finales, because that's the last thing. We asked for criteria. We asked not just that we go on the basis of a map that dated from 1999 or a map that dated from 2008. We wanted to know what the criteria were. When does a sidewalk make sense as part of a network? We know that streets are classified as to this is a collector, this is an arterial, this much vault, traffic volume, traffic speeds, and the surrounding land uses are usually in one, in categories that relate to those roadway uses. Well, our, a collection, a group of our commissioners came together on a Living Streets Committee and with staff helped to identify those specific criteria, and that's what's before us now, is a system, a network that actually has been planned according to those criteria. So I too would like to hear public testimony tonight. I would like to keep the record open until December, and I would like to seek more input from the Transportation Commission, and then I would like to have a decision made at the first meeting in December.
Thank you. Member Brindle, your thoughts?
How sidewalks are considered and have been considered has changed a lot, and it's changed, the, the decision, the, the manner of payment, I think, probably has changed maybe the most of all. And in the calls that I've gotten in the last couple of days, it indicates that we have some information to make sure, not only that it gets out, but that it's understood, that sidewalks aren't going to cost any more than you're paying right now. You're already paying to put sidewalks throughout the sidewalk plan. We all are. And, and it was, how long ago did that start?
Two years.
Two years ago. On your electric bill and on your gas bill, there's a utility. There's an extra $1.45 on each one. So from each of you, each household, the utilities turn over to the city. Dollars that are collected with your utility, it's legal, lots of cities do it, lots of cities do more than we do. And so we are all sharing in the build-out of the sidewalk and bike lane network, the non-motorized network in our city. And that, that I think is something in a community conversation could be much better understood as we go out and, and I think, coming out to visit with residents, I mean, I'm right there. I love to talk, but, and, and I love to connect with you. And just, but mostly to make sure you understand the information we have that we're making a decision from. And, and the conversation is the best way to, best way to do that. We can send it out in the Sun Current, we can send it out in Nextdoor, we can send it out on the website, we can send it out in lots of different ways, but still, the knee-to-knee, face-to-face conversation is the way the best information gets, gets relayed and understood. So I would be all for some community conversations to, to make sure that we do understand each other and we do understand what each other has as our, our information. The past practice is that when your street was up for reconstruction, you got a survey and said, "Do you want a sidewalk?" And most everybody said, "No, no, 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 no." And it was a financial decision, perfectly understood. And so that's the main reason for establishing the utility fund, is to take that away in order to make an easier, easier decision and an easier build-out of a sidewalk network. And then the, the part of the sidewalk plan, it's all, you know, it's available to all of us. We have this, and it's got blue lines and yellow lines and red lines, and some are dashed and some are solid, and we look at it, and what's not there for me is, why does that piece make sense? Or why does that piece make sense? And so I, I had a conversation with Mark Nolan, this is no surprise to him. And so I had a conversation with Mark Nolan, this is no surprise to him that I would be saying this, but what are the destinations? What are the reasons that that particular piece makes sense? Now, our city is really divided into four quadrants. That's no surprise. We all drive across Highway One Hundred, and we all drive across Crosstown. But on those bridges is the ability to connect sidewalks, to connect people across those bridges. And so if you had a sidewalk network that got you to the bridge and a sidewalk network that got you from the bridge, your kids might walk across to the park across the bridge. They might walk across the bridge to get to the high school, for example, instead of taking a bus, which is what they have to do now because it's not safe to cross the bridge. So, but that's a long way of saying, there are ways to communicate this that make it better understood so that when you come, and I'm happy to have you talk tonight, but when you come to a public hearing or when you make your sidewalk decision, it's, or recommendation for us as we, to consider as we make our decision, in your best interest, that you understand what we know. And I think that's very important.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So what I hear, I think consensus on is that, we'll have Mr. Nolan make his presentation tonight. We'll take testimony from anyone who wishes to testify this evening, and then we'll take subsequent written correspondence from folks on issues that are important to raise. But we're going to close the public hearing tonight, and so then the council would defer making a decision until the first Monday in December. And between now and then, we'll make every effort to have at least one community meeting in each quadrant so that the council can make a decision with full community input from each quadrant. So I see a person waving their hand in the back. We can't have, when you have your public, when you give your public testimony, you can raise your issue at that point in time, but not right now.
Okay, so you can't have a question?
If you, you can raise the question in your public testimony. We'll answer it when we close the public testimony. So, all right. Staff, comfortable with this approach too? We between, and we'll try to set up meetings in each quadrant between now and the, what is it, the third, second of December? So that we have everybody's, we understand everybody's concern, and everybody can meet with public officials. Some of us will try to be at each of the meetings and interact with folks. We may use people from the ETC so that folks can understand what the public policy reasons are. We're thinking that we need this non-motorized transportation system to supplement our motorized transportation system. So with that, Mr. Nolan, why don't you come up?
Your Honor, the only thing I would say to that is that, yes, that is indeed possible to do that between now and the first week of December, but given the holiday in the middle of it and given the other days that we have to work around, we won't probably have a lot to give in this schedule. So we're going to have to probably, instead, sometimes we will call everybody and try to pick a date that works for everybody. We probably won't be able to be as flexible in this case. We're probably going to have to pick dates and venues at work and then do the best we can to get notice out.
I would assume we'd also have the ETC opine on any relevant issues that come up in the interim?
Sure.
And have that either as an advisory communication or draft minutes.
Right.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Nolan?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here to give a brief presentation on the staff's recommendation for the sidewalk facilities map, comprehensive plan amendment, understanding council's wish to have a final vote take place about a month from now, but I think it's important to get some background. And you all have done a very good job already of highlighting a lot of the key points I'm about to make here tonight, but let's just go ahead and get started. So to start us off, why is staff recommending this comprehensive plan amendment? Well, in addition to council's desire, which I'll talk about in a little bit, or stated desire early on in the year, or earlier in the year, to have an approved sidewalk plan in place, but when considering the 2015 neighborhood reconstruction projects, staff really views this as a continuation of, as was discussed by you all, residents' stated desires and city policy and active living efforts that have taken place in the city over the past few years. And as was stated earlier, Edina's 2013 quality-of-life survey, seventy-three percent of respondents indicated that Edina needs more sidewalks. And the Park and Rec survey that was just completed, eighty-five percent of respondents have indicated a need for walking and biking trails. Half of those indicated that as their number-one need. And yes, that survey dealt primarily with parks. However, all of this together highlights some of the community-wide desire for increased pedestrian facilities and walkability. In 2011 through 2013, Dootown engaged hundreds of residents in conversations about Edina being a healthier community. And again, as was mentioned previously, in December 2012, the pedestrian and cyclist safety fund was created to fund non-motorized transportation infrastructure. In August of last year, the Living Streets policy was approved by this council unanimously, and since that point, staff has been drafting the Living Streets implementation plan. And as I just mentioned, on July first, at a council work session, staff did hear from council a desire to have a plan in place, or at least to attempt to have a plan in place when considering future construction projects for next year. And September third, the draft sidewalk facilities map was presented to the Living Streets Advisory Group, which is made up of board, members of our boards and commissions have been meeting basically monthly for the past year. On September eighteenth, that map was recommended for approval by the Edina Transportation Commission. And October third, the facilities map was posted for public comment on Speak Up Edina. I'll talk about that process here in a little bit. On October seventh, the council received an informational packet regarding the sidewalk map, just to make sure that you all had a chance and some extra time to look at it and to be able to see what the public would, had been given access to. On October twenty-second, Planning Commission held a public hearing and approval of the comprehensive plan amendment that we're discussing now. On October twenty-seventh, that public comment period closed on Speak Up Edina. Again, I'll talk about that in just a couple of minutes. And tonight, we have recommended that the council consider the comprehensive plan amendment. And after this amendment is approved, if indeed it is, there are some required adjacent review periods, and council has their own review period that would take place after that. So the 2008 comprehensive plan, the image that you see in front of you now is, well, the plan has been in place for a while. So this is the sidewalk facilities plan that we used as a base from which to start this process. And this plan was created prior to Edina's active living efforts and Living Streets policy. And the evaluation categories at that time focused on school, park, and activity center walking zones and were a bit subjective, I think, in terms of the data that was involved, and that's one thing that staff considered when moving forward with the plan that you see in front of you, which is the recommended sidewalk facilities map, which really kind of came from an effort to update, this effort to update the facilities map evolved out of the Living Streets planning and policy activities. And I'm about to go over a series of requirements and criteria that, I believe it was Council Member Bennett had referred to, and wanted to make sure that you all know that staff, in addition to these criteria and the data that was, that's considered and what the Living Streets policy had told us, and the direction from council, is that we did indeed consider the sidewalk as a pedestrian transportation network. So you, you won't see individual segments of sidewalk floating out in the middle of nowhere because they met some certain criteria. Staff wanted to make sure that they were part of a network that connects both to and through destinations and also to and through neighborhoods. So the approved side, Living Streets policy, sidewalks are required on all arterial and collector streets and where streets about a public school, public building, community playfield, or neighborhood park. So the sidewalk facilities map, building on the Living Streets policy and on input from council, boards, commissions, residents, and staff, the sidewalk facilities map requires sidewalks at public schools, public buildings, and parks, on both sides of minor arterials, on at least one side of collectors, and is required by zoning code or plan approval, and also a series of context criteria that might demonstrate how an otherwise optional sidewalk might be required. And some of those criteria, or all of those criteria are listed here. Really, first and foremost for staff is if that sidewalk is in our approved, recommended, or in the active routes-to-school plan as an infrastructure recommendation. Those are the sidewalks that are in blue. Also, whether it's part of a park or commercial destination, where average daily traffic on that street may be greater than five hundred vehicles per day, and eighty-fifth percentile speed is greater than thirty miles per hour. Some additional criteria, if there's a history of crashes involving pedestrians, whether or not there are transit stops, if it's a logical connection between destinations, there could be poor sightlines or lighting, et cetera, that might cause pedestrians to potentially be unsafe in the street, and also if the street is particularly narrow, less than twenty-seven feet wide, in order to provide, again, that safety. And the matrix that you see on the screen here, it was in your packet, it's too small to read here, but the matrix indicates how sidewalks that are on local streets meet the criteria. These are the sidewalks that are in the plan that are on local streets. And again, this matrix talks about how they meet the criteria, doesn't list arterial and collector streets because according to the Living Streets policy and this plan, those streets are already required to have sidewalks. And I wanted to provide a kind of a blown-up version around Braddison Park here to be able to talk about what those specific sidewalk, sidewalks mean in the plan. So the brown, the solid orange line, which may appear kind of brown here, that's where the existing sidewalks are today. And the future state aid sidewalks are in a brown dash. There's an example here on Valley View Road just east of Tracy. State aid sidewalks are funded by a combination of state aid and pedestrian cyclist safety funds. Active routes-to-school sidewalks, future active routes-to-school sidewalks are in blue. And again, those sidewalks that are, that were recommended by the active routes-to-school plan, again, funded by PACS funds and also any opportunities we get for additional grants and other funds, we will take advantage of that. And the red dash lines are what we're calling future city sidewalks. Those are sidewalks that don't meet either of those other two criteria but are required otherwise according to the criteria and location, also funded by PACS funds. So we used Speak Up Edina as one of our primary ways of gathering some public input. And this, the plan and also the text for the comp plan amendment was posted for public comment and discussion on October third. There were two public hearings, both on the twenty-second with the Planning Commission and also this public hearing, that were publicized in the Sun Current. And in those publications, there was also a link to be able to, link to this plan so you could download the plan, comment on the plan. Emails were sent out via City Extra and also to all Edina and Nextdoor members. There are over thirty-three hundred members on Edina and Nextdoor. And this is the method that staff used to reach out to the community. And during that, about three or four-week period, we received fifty individual comments. On Speak Up Edina, all the comments were supportive of sidewalks, with many residents commenting on wanting sidewalks in their individual streets, and then also, yes.
Member Bennett?
I have a quick question, and that is, so aside from the Star Tribune and the Sun Current, and the Sun Current is theoretically free, but not everybody in the city gets it, we know, and some people pay for their subscriptions, but Speak Up Edina, City Extra, and Nextdoor are all free, correct?
Correct.
So if people can sign, if people can sign up in person at City Hall or can contact City Hall and let them know that they, yeah, or can sign up online. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then some residents also commented on maybe some additional criteria to consider, whether it's trees or population density. Some, there were some very interesting comments we received. But of course, we also received email comments and the petition that's in your packet, and some phone calls, some in support of sidewalks and some in opposition to sidewalks on their particular street, and in the case of the petition on Maddox Lane. We did, staff did make some revisions to the sidewalk map based on public comment that was received during that period. Future sidewalks were added in the locations that I've shown here, Seventy-Eighth Street, Fifty-Ninth Street, Forty-Ninth Street near Fiftieth and France, and Indian Hills Pass near Creek Valley School. And these were added because we did receive public comment, and staff went back and did some additional research, looking at some of the criteria and the traffic counts. And in one case, on Seventy-Eighth Street, it was a sidewalk that was missed on a minor arterial. Staff also removed sidewalk in one location on Concord Avenue. A resident testified at the Planning Commission meeting about this street, and staff went back and looked at traffic counts and removed a portion of that where the traffic counts were really quite low. We did keep a portion where traffic counts were higher as it leads south into the school. And I'd like to, we, as Mayor brought up earlier, we've heard some concerns from residents on Westshore Drive, I believe primarily south of Seventieth Street, but it could also be north of Seventieth Street if I am mistaken. And I just wanted to call out that this sidewalk has been in the comprehensive plan since 2008, so it is not something new that the staff has added. It's just being carried forward and is also recommended in the city's active routes-to-school plan as a recommended sidewalk. That was missed in the previous iteration of this map. Staff went back and reviewed that document and realized that that sidewalk is on the active routes-to-school plan. And I know there's some literature floating around among that neighborhood about staff and the Planning Commission having approved a roadway designation change for Westshore Drive, and that's not the case. There was no roadway designation changes approved. That's not part of this comprehensive plan amendment.
So this concern about Westshore Drive being re-designated a collector is not an issue?
Not at this point. It is being considered as a recommendation in the Living Streets plan that was, that council had discussed early in terms of those different street types. There's an additional street designation, but that plan has not been put forth for approval yet.
Okay. That's important because a lot of folks have expressed that concern.
Sure.
This, this process could end up causing that street to be re-designated as a collector street, so thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome. Some key points to consider as I conclude the presentation. Again, as being part of the comprehensive plan and staff sees this, this is really a twenty-to-thirty-year plan. So this sidewalk plan and all the new sidewalks that are indicated on this plan aren't meant to be reconstructed next year. They're not meant all to be reconstructed in thirty years. It's, these sidewalk segments, staff sees as being implemented over a period of twenty to thirty years. So it does take a long time to build out a network. Each, a network is built out piece by piece, project by project, and that takes a long time. Side of the street is not determined by this map and in this proposed amendment. That would be determined later by engineering studies and stakeholder input as a, as a project is proposed to be implemented. Streets without sidewalks in the plan, in the map, can still be considered for sidewalks in the future, residents can petition for a sidewalk. Criteria can change. Roadways, there could be development that happens, and roadways could experience a lot of increased traffic, increased pedestrian demand, so these are things that should be considered. And also, the boulevard width and sidewalk location can vary depending on impacts. There's trees, steep slopes, and other impacts that staff considers when looking at locating a particular sidewalk on either side of a street. So I guess in conclusion, the staff believes this map is based on city policy, comprehensive plan goals, Living Streets policy, active routes-to-school plan, and it supports a citywide pedestrian transportation network that's data-driven and responds to residents' stated desire for increased pedestrian facilities. And that's my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Nolan at this point in time? Member Sprague?
Can you run me through the approval timeline for active routes-to-schools while it wasn't on the presentation?
Active routes-to-school was approved in February of this year, and that process began certainly prior to my arrival at the city, but that process had taken place in a, with a working group that still meets periodically, but that plan was approved in February of this year and received public input through the schools and through that planning process.
Thank you.
You might comment on the notion of the twenty-to-thirty-year plan, and I think folks would want to know, well, how do I know when something might happen in my neighborhood? Am I going to have another chance to voice an opinion about this? Is it going to be linked to a road reconstruction project? What's the process, in other words, for determining what portions of the plan, if it were approved, would go first?
Well, a lot of it depends on available funding with the pedestrian and cyclist safety fund, but you brought up the neighborhood roadway reconstruction projects. That would be, staff sees that as the primary vehicle for constructing sidewalks. It's considerably less expensive to do so, up to forty to sixty percent less expensive to construct a sidewalk on a road that's being reconstructed than by itself. And for that process and also for our other process, like our state aid road reconstruction projects, neighborhoods and residents are notified up to two years in advance before that process, and we start having public meetings. So staff envisions at that point, the sidewalk plan would be shared with residents again to be able to show them where sidewalks had been approved in the comprehensive plan, and then work from that point in terms of getting input from residents.
Right. You might- You might comment about how much money is available for use in that fund per year?
There's 1.1, it's so far been about 1.1 million dollars per year in that fund. It costs approximately, depending on whether you're building a sidewalk with a reconstruction project or without, anywhere from 50 to 120 dollars a linear foot to build a sidewalk. So you could do the math. It allows us to build a certain amount of sidewalks per year. We've been focusing on construction these first couple of years, but staff realizes there are maintenance costs that are also associated with the fund.
Good. Other questions for Mr. Nolan, Nolan at this point in time? All right. Thanks, Mr. Nolan.
Thank you.
Folks, I'm going to open this as a matter up for public testimony, and you'll have three minutes. And when you have 30 seconds left, you'll get a yellow light. If you don't have an overhead that you want to use, you can use one of the side podiums. I think they're, they're more effective. And then give us your name and address when you start out your presentation. Good evening.
I'm Russ Nelson. I'm at 7117 West Shore Drive. I have a few questions for Mr. Nolan. That in the plan you mentioned, the active schools, I've looked at that document that's on the web. It says October 2013. West Shore Drive is not mentioned in that document as an active street for schools. Also, in the document that was posted for the agenda tonight, if you look at the map down there, it shows it as a future active routes to school. So since the, this shows it future active routes to school, but in the Edina active routes to school comprehensive plan, it does not. There's no mention that I could see anywhere that references West Shore Drive. So maybe we need a little more research to determine where did that come from on the slide that we saw? In Mr. Nolan's presentation.
Yeah, please.
We didn't answer your questions at the end.
So please address us.
Yeah. Okay. Then. Next question is in the presentation Mr. Nolan just did, he didn't mention connector streets. He mentioned collector streets. Connector streets was, is in the approved living streets policy. That was an omission. It'd be good to hear, what does it mean to be a connector street? According to a document I read off the web, that is required to have sidewalks. That was not part of the presentation. It also looks like on connector streets, there's going to be sidewalks on one side of the street. This is, this document will be organizing chaos in communities. One side of the street doesn't want it and the other street, side of the street doesn't want it. Our streets were reconstructed five years ago. Nobody wanted sidewalks. Now we're proposing on West Shore Drive to having sidewalks. So one neighbor is going to be pitted against another neighbor. Edina should be for unity, not for division. Thank you.
Nancy Thorvilsen, 7221 Oaklawn Avenue. I've got a number of questions for the council that I don't think have been answered. Probably the one I think is the most important to me is, how is the payment for cost to regrade driveways and to put up retaining walls in yards and cost of sprinklers and things going to be done? Is that basically a tax on each individual resident or is that in the, would we all be reimbursed if the sidewalk goes across our front yard and it takes, you know, three feet of retaining wall now because there's a big elevation? And then my second question is kind of, sort of pertains to that, is how do you determine which side of the street? Do you look at the number of driveways and the amount of elevation that's going to be involved? I know on my street, it's planned for the east side of the street, which is higher elevations. There's 17 or 18 driveways compared to six driveways on the west side of the street. I think those are important things. The other question I have is about the speeds. Shouldn't we be enforcing speed limits and doing traffic calming methods? I think that when we have streets where the 80, 15 percent of the cars are going faster than 38 miles an hour, that's a problem for the police and traffic rather than, do we need a sidewalk there? Maybe we need to control the speed. And then how many of the people who wanted sidewalks, wanted them on their street? Was that part of the question? I, I'd like those answered. And then, you know, taking a fifth of people's front yards on Oaklawn Avenue is going to pretty much, and increasing the grade on their driveway is going to probably make them unable to park more than two cars in their driveway. Do we get, like, that's about 1/15th of our yard space. Do we get a 1/15th break on property taxes too? Since it's sort of being taken out of our use, can't use it for parking and everything. So I'd like those questions answered tonight, if that's possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Thorvilsen.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Don Jevry, and I live on 7016 West Shore Drive. Basically, the first question that I've got is of you council people. I do know that one individual does have a sidewalk. Do the other individuals, do you presently have sidewalks?
What else, what else do you have, Don?
Okay. My, my question, because in 1958, I helped build manholes down 70th Street and up to Cahill Road and down to Dewey Hill. And I also was involved with doing a lot of work on those streets. And I lived in Edina, my present location, for 35 years, two months and three days without a sidewalk. And of course, I thought that perhaps when they did a street construction, that they would have a sidewalk one side or the other. My main reason for saying that is I lived in Minneapolis. And I moved to Edina because at that time, it was a group of people that said, hey, we can't afford two high schools, we can only afford one. And I thought, boy, that's a smart group of people that are deciding for their community. Well, I also have to say, I am a sidewalk expert. I lived in Minneapolis where the rules are, you have 24 hours to remove the snow on your sidewalk. I happen to live on Queen and London Hills Boulevard, boulevard 20 feet away from the snow where they plowed it. The other side had Queen Avenue, which was plowed with a five-foot, as is now projected for sidewalks. The reason I say I'm an expert is I had 140 feet by 140 feet of six-foot sidewalk that had that restriction. I also went for two weeks where nobody plowed the street, different side of the story. But when a truck plows onto a driveway, you people who have driveway, you're experienced. That's not the same fluffy stuff that comes down on your driveway. It's a packed snow that's very heavy. And the people who are going to end up having to shovel that sidewalk that gets plowed, it's a difficult job. Now, I know that the one, Mr. or Councilman Sprague, he has a plow that comes by and takes care of it when it can, not all the time, because this last summer, or excuse me, last winter, my backyard, five feet of snow. And it didn't make any difference whether it was a sidewalk, a street, a driveway or whatever. But this morning, I took my vehicle and I drove all the way down to 66th Street, and I was very nice to have a light because at one time without lights, there were stoplights, I waited five minutes to make a left-hand turn.
Mr. Jevry, I need to have you wrap up.
Because of the traffic.
Yeah.
So I'm really glad to see the stop sign, but it's a little longer than I expected trying to get onto it. And I know that it's a presettable circumstance.
I need to have you wrap up, Mr. Jevry.
Okay. I drove, I drove down to 66th Street. The only traffic or business on there were three trucks for the construction.
Actually, I need to have you stop, Mr. Jevry.
Well, okay. Would you please, before next month, make one drive down that West Shore from there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Many of us drive it regularly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Martin LaVenture. I live on 6717 West Shore Drive. And I'm, first of all, want to compliment you on the comprehensive nature of the transportation planning. It's really thoughtful, looking beyond the near term into the future. And I want to rise to fully endorse sidewalks on West Shore Drive. We were very disappointed three years ago when they were not implemented. And I, I am very pleased that they are in the long-term vision and the plan and support of really two things, health and safety. And if we look at, if we look at, I think what's changed in the last few years, what's been a driver for me in thinking about sidewalks around the whole issue of health and safety is things like the Commissioner of Health's report on social determinants of health that was issued to the legislature in March. That outlined that there, when we look at the issues of health in a community, there's comprehensive type of issues that are essential to assuring that we have healthier, long-term communities. And things like walkable communities, connected networks were part of that thinking, and that's backed by the science from the Institute of Medicine, who is, as you know, last March, also issued some reports related to the social determinants of health and why comprehensive planning is so important and effective for communities and why we clearly believe and support the issues of sidewalks in our neighborhood. And the Centers for Zee's Control, who has recently issued reports related to the issues of safety and why that is, and walkability of communities for safety, particularly among children, and why it's good public policy to assure for quality of life purposes that that's as important to, to have. And I think on a personal note, my wife and I walk a good deal in our neighborhoods, and I, I'll very much look forward to not having to jump over the curb onto the sidewalk uneven, especially in these times of year when the grass is uneven, as cars come flying by, even with lights and reflectors and other things. And that, having that ability, walking down to Lake Cornelia Park and other areas that do have those sections are very valuable. So for, both for the many children and that we see in the neighborhood that have to move off the street as with their trikes and bikes and other things, we clearly believe this is a, I think, a very personal community issue that's essential. And we strongly endorse that effort. So thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration and you endorse your plan to come into the communities and continue that discussion.
We'll get you a handheld microphone.
You know, I, I'm just going to leave these here and stick them up.
All right.
My name is Deanne Dubs. I've raised four children at 5316 Maddox Lane, where I've lived for the past 30 years. In a survey of all residents living along Maddox Lane, taken October 25th, 26th, 94 percent are opposed to a sidewalk on our street for various reasons. The Wyman Bridge access bisects Maddox Lane and serves to provide car traffic, the opportunity to cross Highway 62, and in doing so allows access to Highway 100 and very, various commercial districts. Very few destinations are close enough to Maddox Lane for pedestrians. It is a three-mile round trip to the closest library, restaurant, grocery, drug or liquor store. Southdale is over four miles there and back, and 50th and France is six miles. Within the Birchcrest neighborhood, all destinations are north of Maddox Lane. If one wants to walk to Birchcrest Park or to the metro bus stop on Benton and 100 or the community center, one would hardly first walk south to Maddox Lane, only to then turn north to reach their destination. It doesn't make sense to put a sidewalk on a car route when pedestrians are inclined to take the most direct path. If the purpose of the walk is for pleasure, residents in our neighborhood are able to choose streets with less car traffic. On Friday night, I had 17 trick-or-treaters at my house. Six of them were from Minneapolis. Two were children from Next Door. Only nine children from the surrounding neighborhood went to my house. Obviously not a popular street at the southern edge of the neighborhood. Snow and ice removal will be an important cost for residents, whether they do it themselves or hire it done. A sidewalk will increase my shoveling area by 46 percent. Residents are required to remove all snow and ice within 48 hours or else the city will clear the sidewalk and assess the cost to property owners. And should someone fall and be injured, I could be faced with expensive litigation. Almost all of the Maddox Lane residents were unaware of the Edina Sidewalk Facility Comprehensive Plan until our door-to-door survey eight days ago. A letter to the Birchcrest neighborhood dated September 8th concerning roadway reconstruction mentions that sidewalk are, sidewalks are not included with every project and that a future questionnaire will help evaluate the need for sidewalks. It was only by attending the September 29th meeting at the Public Works Facility and there seeing a poster of the proposed sidewalk map, that I realized clearly sidewalk decisions had already been made. At the October, October 22nd Planning Commission meeting, I was told that the community had been notified by social media that you could find the information on the Edina internet website and by an ad in the Sun Current newspaper, which is so small and brief that it would not arouse curiosity. There seems to be a rush to implement this plan before citizens are made aware of it and more seriously, before citizens can have a voice in the neighborhood in which they live. The three neighborhoods of Valley View, Gulf Terrace, and Indianola, Wanita, have had the sidewalk plan amended to exclude them. Maddox Lane now makes the same request. It is a misuse of public funds to put a sidewalk on a seldom-walked street, which is not a direct route for the few neighborhood destinations.
Ms. Dubs, I've let you drift over a little bit. I think I need to have you wrap up.
Okay. I'm, I'm, two more sentences. It would place an unnecessary burden on the residents who clearly do not want it. The elected officials should question the validity of the criteria approved by the Planning Commission and be sensitive to the residents of the neighborhood who have lived on Maddox Lane and so have intimate knowledge of the foot, bike, and car traffic on our street. It is against the will of the people, and so we ask you to amend the plan to remove Maddox Lane before you vote to approve the plan in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dubs. And thanks for coming up in advance. And if you want to make your written comments part of the record, you could certainly tender them to the clerk. Or if you want to make a copy and send them in, we'll certainly make it part of the record in this proceeding.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I know you wanted a little bit more time, and I thank you for coming up in advance and asking me about that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Martin. I'm a longtime resident here at Edina. I live at 5329 Maddox Lane, which is right on the corner of Hanson Road and Maddox Lane. And this program, this effort to have a livable, walking, living street is a great cause, has a lot of great possibilities to it, and it would be appropriate in a lot of different neighborhoods. But like a lot of public works programs, you're going to find widespread support for them. Sounds like a great idea, as long as it's not in my backyard. And sidewalks are no different. Unfortunately, this is in our front yards. And first of all, like all things, it's personal. My house is on the corner of Hanson Road and Maddox Lane. So my house has setbacks from both Maddox and Hanson Road. So I really don't have a backyard. I've got a side yard. So I've got a front yard. So with a five-foot boulevard and a sidewalk, you're going to be running a sidewalk through my backyard. Not to mention all the shoveling that everybody's used. And that's not going to be, and that's not much different from any of my other neighbors. Maddox Lane, Maddox Lane doesn't have a lot of backyards. And it's, and our front yards are important to us, particularly to me. And what you've heard, Maddox Lane is a two-block street. Other parts of the neighborhood have it discontinued. So really, we have a two-block sidewalk going from nowhere. We don't have a destination in our neighborhood. So my concern is it doesn't meet the criteria of a collector's street. It's not a arterial street. It's not a destination street. Traffic, as somebody else said, should be handled with law enforcement. So again, we, I think, at least me, I'm going to be personal, there might be some other people that are for this, which I'm sure there are. Like I said, it's a great idea. Works at 50th and France. It could work around Jerry's Foods. It could work around any one of the schools. Great idea. But we that live on Maddox Lane don't think it's a good idea. And I think it's going to cause more problems than it cures anything. And again, somebody else, I think, had a really good idea that I might even pit neighbors against neighbors. pit neighbors against neighbors. We have a wide enough street. We don't have any problem walking. We haven't had any car accidents. And I'll grant you, I have a history with the city how coming out with meters on Hanson and Maddox Lane, yeah, we have some high speeds there. But again, I've always advocated that's a law enforcement, or some sort of traffic calming. Sidewalks won't fix it. So again, my, we have a concern, two blocks to nowhere. It'll be like, I don't know, the tunnel in New York, on a smaller scale.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Walt McClure. I live at 6621 West Shore. My opinion is quite the opposite of the gentleman who just spoke. We had this issue arise when our street was reconstructed a couple of years ago, and a great majority of residents on West Shore Drive did not want sidewalks. As for myself personally and my neighbors, it was not a financial issue. It was an issue of the character of the street. I have raised, I and my wife, I should say, have raised three children from infancy to now successful adulthood on that street without sidewalks, and without fear that we were going to be run over. It just simply wasn't an issue. If you want cityscapes, then one can move to those areas. But we moved to the suburbs because we wanted that character in our streets. And the, I hope one of the criteria is the wishes of the residents of the street for a sidewalk. And that issue, I think, was determined just a few years ago. Do we have to, like developers, year after year, fight a development that we don't want? Because they're always back, and they're always back. Will the Planning Commission be the same? If you will poll that street, I think you'll have the same opinion as you had a couple of years ago when the street was reconstructed. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Koby Laventure. Martin's my husband. But we were the few people on West Shore Drive that did want sidewalks, and we still would like sidewalks. We're avid walkers, and I just think it's forward-thinking of the council to be looking at the next twenty to thirty years for our long-term health and benefit. We've had a lot of young families move into our neighborhood, and a lot of my neighbors have grandchildren now, and those grandkids are riding just in the driveway, because there's no place for children to safely navigate West Shore Drive. As far as the speed of our street, a few years ago when we had the reconstruction, they added a stop sign and a curb. That really hasn't done much for the kids careening down the hill and zipping down West Shore Drive. So speed is always going to be an issue. But I think the other picture to think about is long-term health for our community. And I know the mayor has tried to have some walking events and making it more walkable, and an experience my husband and I have is, I had no idea I lived so close to Byerlees until the sidewalk got put in place on France Avenue. And I use my Google Maps, and it's less than, it's about a mile and a half for me to walk to the grocery store, which I think your other vision of networking our neighborhoods is extremely important. We are also avid bikers, and when our children were young, it was almost impossible to get to safe bike routes from our neighborhood. We lived over by Our Lady of Grace for about eight years, and then we've been in our current location almost fourteen years. And we feel isolated in both of those communities. So I want to commend you on your effort. I realize it gets lots and lots of people riled up when things change. But I think if you look at, our suburb was created in the 50s and 60s, and now we have to look to the next generation. And I think we need to have more walkable streets. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Laventure.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name's Chad Rasmussen, 5320 Maddox Lane. I just wanted to say that I am one of the young families that moved into Edina. I have three small children, and I am opposed to the sidewalk that's supposed to be coming in. My children use the front yard as a play area, and I don't have a very big yard, so that would take away a lot of area for them to not have. There are costs to be considered. The sidewalk would be paid for by public money, like you stated, from utility fees that all Edina residents pay. Why not install the sidewalks where the public feels they are needed and wanted? It is a great idea, until, like they say, it comes into your yard. Taking away a lot of my green space, that's what I like about Edina, green space, big trees, mature trees, lawns. A lot of my neighbors and myself take great care in our lawns. We don't want this concrete to come through. Since the driveway now allows for four cars, two cars wide and two cars deep, a fifty percent reduction would occur after sideways were installed, and driveways would no longer be deep enough for a second row of two cars. On our street, there are two daycare providers on Maddox Lane who would be faced with reduced off-street parking for their client families, especially during critical drop-off and pickup times. The criteria that Transportation Planner has put forth as pertaining to Maddox Lane were, according to Mark at the October 22nd Planning Commission meeting, most likely measured on Valley View. A section of the roadway now dropped off the sidewalk plan by a previous vote of the City Council. The eighty-fifth percentile speed of thirty-five miles per hour listed in the criteria matrix would be hard to achieve on Maddox Lane, which has a sharp S-turn at one end, a stop sign two blocks later where it dead-ends at Hanson Road. If speeding were a problem, it should be addressed by law enforcement, not by adding sidewalks. Sidewalks have not been shown to slow down cars, rather, cars slow down when pedestrians are present. Ninety-four percent of residents living along our street feel safe when walking or biking on Maddox Lane, per the survey taken. There have been no pedestrian accidents reporting on Maddox Lane. At the very least, the Transportation Department should conduct speed and traffic counts on the street in question when making their judgment, not assessing one as a whole. If speed is the concern, then let's address the speed issue with the high traffic that Maddox Lane is used as a cut-through, and put a stop sign in at Wyman and Maddox and speed bumps, but to deter people from traveling down the street, not adding sidewalks for the limited use of pedestrian walkways. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Rasmussen. Folks.
Hi, I'm Emily Betke. I live at 6816 Oaklawn Avenue. Thanks, Mayor Hovland and the City Council, for having this public forum tonight. I'm here to offer my support for the sidewalk facilities plan. I think it's a great step toward making Edina a more walkable community, which I think is really important, and I particularly appreciate the attention to active routes to school. I think that pedestrians are our most vulnerable transportation users, and among those pedestrians, I think that our students are even more vulnerable, because they're young, they're smaller, they're not fully grown, they don't, their brains aren't fully developed to understand looming speed, et cetera. And I really, really appreciate the attention to putting a safe route to school for our students. And I just really appreciate the thoughtfulness of the plan for sidewalks. It seems like a very conservative, thought-out plan that addresses areas that need additional safety to keep Edina's walking environment moving in a direction that makes everybody feel safe. Thank you.
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Wally Norlander. I live at 5317 Maddox Lane. And fortunately, my neighbors on Maddox Lane have already told you just about everything that I was going to say, but I do want to support them and the rest of our neighbors who are not here. And I would hope that you will exempt Maddox Lane from the comprehensive sidewalk plan. Perhaps surveys and planning staff opinions have indicated a perceived need for a sidewalk on Maddox Lane, but specific homeowner input on Maddox Lane, to my knowledge, was not solicited. And my neighbors and I would ask that you exempt us from the sidewalk plan. In the thirty-six years that I have lived on Maddox Lane, I have, I know of no pedestrian accident involving automobiles, and I don't see that there is a traffic issue. Most of the front lawns on Maddox Lane are shallow, and the sidewalk plan would take up to about one-fourth of my neighbors', and perhaps mine', front lawns. And we hate to see that happen. Payment for the sidewalks, obviously, is not an issue. Our landscapes are more important to us than paying for the sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norlander.
My name is Paul Hanson. I live at 5224 Maddox Lane. Almost all of the speakers before me have alluded to all of the facts that I was going to bring up about Maddox Lane in regards to the sidewalk. I too am against a sidewalk in Maddox Lane, but I just thought I'd put some numbers to it. On average, the proposed sidewalk and boulevard consume approximately twenty-three percent of each of the residents' front yard. This is based on a total front yard measurement of twenty-six hundred and fifty square feet, of which the proposed sidewalk and boulevard would consume approximately six hundred square feet. Some houses would fare worse, some better, but as an example, houses on the 5200 block of Maddox Lane would have approximately thirty-five feet from the sidewalk to our front door, which equals about eleven steps. In conjunction, there would be some mature trees that have to be removed, potentially damaged to the point that they may die. This does not, this does in fact affect the character and the aesthetics of the neighborhood, as well as it threatens the privacy of our homes. All of this for a sidewalk that no one in our neighborhood wants or needs. So, thank you for listening. I just have one other request. I would like to understand that in the meetings that you proposed, Mayor Hovland, that we actually have active listening going on, by comparison to the inactive listening that was going out at the Planning Commission, when they said, "Thank you for your input", and immediately voted to put a sidewalk on Maddox Lane.
Hi, my name is Ron Rich. I'm at 7008 West Shore Drive, south of Seventieth Street. Tonight, I can mostly speak in ignorance, because I didn't hear about anything on this plan at all, anything, until a neighborhood flyer came out on Saturday. At that point in time, after we'd voted out the plan that we did not want a sidewalk in 2009, apparently after the Comprehensive Plan was approved, we weren't told we were going to need to have a sidewalk. This is not something we understand is going to happen, and I've learned tonight that apparently it was added after the fact for no reason that I can understand. Now, I'm an engineer, so I would like to have information. I have no, I did not receive any surveys as part of any of this planning process. I was not notified by the city or anyone else, except our neighbor on Saturday, that any of this was going to happen. I had no knowledge. It's, even if you publicize it and you put it on a website, I can't spend the time to look through a website. I need to be actively notified if it directly affects my property. Everyone needs to be actively notified, and proactively notified, far in advance. Mayor Hovland, I appreciate the fact that we have another little bit of time to work on this. That's a very good plan for us tonight, because approving this plan with our street involved does not seem very rational. But I would like to see the information as part of this plan, knowing when we're going to, apparently, very soon have a public meeting with the neighbors. All the data from 2008 should be shipped to me personally, so I can review whatever information we have and determine on what basis these decisions were made. I don't know. I don't know why West Shore was added. I don't know so much about this plan that it very bothers me, and it goes right in my, potentially, in my front yard. Although I've also found out from one of our neighbors that our side of the street was not surveyed. Only the other side of the street was surveyed. So apparently, it is going in our neighborhood, tearing up gardens and several other things going on. Very frustrating. I really am most depressed about the planning process itself. It may be you've gone through a very expensive thing. You had consultants involved. You've had staff involved. You've approved things over the years. But it hasn't resulted in any planning that involved the residents, the affected residents. That's a very serious flaw, and it needs to be changed. We had this problem with Seventieth Street, Josh, as you well remember, and it happened again. The residents are not happy. All I remember is 2009, after this planning process started, the vote was eighty-eight percent, no sidewalk, twelve percent for a sidewalk, my wife being one of the "for a sidewalk" people. So I know very well that there are people that would like a sidewalk, but not very many. And she was suppressed. So we're good. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rich. Hope everything's going okay at home.
Don't show this on TV.
Evening. I'm Brian Dooley. I'm a new resident to Edina. I moved here last year. And I live on Maddox Lane, 5228 Maddox Lane. I have two small children, eight and five. And while I came from the Nicomas neighborhood, where they do have sidewalks, I can tell you there's no difference in terms of people using the streets, biking, walking. And in particular, as my neighbors have pointed out, the sort of jog at one end of Maddox and the perpendicular end run into Hanson makes it two blocks where there's really no one traveling to any destination across our street. But I just wanted to mention that I appreciate the fact that trying to come up with a Comprehensive Plan for a city is a challenging thing. Everybody has their own interests, and you're trying to meet those. Clearly, there was information that was pulled for this. It seems that in the aggregate, the surveys talking about what would be good for the community as a whole, has not necessarily been applied in a methodical way to the specific. So, if you take our street, and as you've seen, based on both the actual configuration of the street and the residents themselves, seem to differ completely from the comment that life quality would be enhanced by adding sidewalks. So, we appreciate your efforts. We'd love to be participants in any discussion or input that relates to our property, per se. Because I think what you're seeing is a translation of something from the general accepted principle to the application to all of our properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley. And welcome to Edina. Nice to have you here.
Hi. My name's Carol Muslewicek. I live at 5225 Maddox Lane. The best part of tonight is meeting my neighbors. I sense a frustration from the council that you've spent a lot of time and energy on this project, and that we're not informed. And I'm not informed. I wasn't informed until my neighbor told me about this. It's not something that I actively was looking for. I didn't know that I should be. I guess something like this, I would have appreciated a letter in the mail saying that this is coming. I've raised three children in my home. I was an active runner. I've trained and run five marathons. And I did my training in Edina and around the lakes. I never ran on sidewalks. They're very icy in wintertime. I fear the maintenance that a sidewalk will take. I have, my driveway faces north, and by the end of the winter, I have five-foot mounds of ice that I can't budge with my snow blower. Every time the plow goes by, it gets worse. So, I know this will be an expense and a burden to keep a sidewalk clear. Maddox Lane is unique in that it is only two blocks long, and it, the sidewalk would really go nowhere.
I live at fifty-one sixteen one Edina Avenue. Thank you all for your service, and thank you for your time tonight. I, I commend you on putting this off for a month to gather more input from the community. I'm here tonight to talk about notice. I put up on the, on the overhead, there's a little...
There you go. It's right in the middle.
Yep. It's right in the middle. That's the, the application for a, an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the city of Edina. And I, I'm here to ask if the city has to follow this as well, because clearly in the box there, it says that, and this, the notice needs to be mailed out to people within five-hundred feet of the proposed project. In this case, it would be anyone within five-hundred feet of the sidewalk on the map, is my understanding of it. And secondly, the city recommends that people, or that, that the applicant, talk to the people in the area to figure out what they want. Clearly, the people here, most of, many of them weren't aware of it, and the fact that Maddox Lane and West Shore are overrepresented here relative to the community, I, I wonder, are other people in the community aware that this is going on? You know, had the city sent out this notice, I think more people would have been here, quite honestly, maybe in support of or against, I don't know, but just to have that notice would be nice. Several members have made the comment, and a couple of people in the, in the audience have made the comment, too, that it's been published in several free sources, and as, as a couple of the last speakers said, you know, they're not actively looking to see, "Okay, what's the city going to do to me?" You know, so if something this big is going to happen, they expect to be notified via mail. Whether they open the mail and read it or not, it's up to them, but it would be nice if they could get that notice. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Paulson.
Evening.
Thank you for your time. Troy Karen, sixty-seven sixteen West Shore Drive. I live on the corner of Upper Harris and West Shore. I just want to point a clarification from Councilman Swanson. If there was a twelve-year plan, and I'm not sure that pertains to West Shore, why did we have to vote five years ago or three years ago? And how was that involved with this? And now it comes up again. Also, Mr. Mayor, we've rushed through a lot of stuff recently. Is there any chance we could wait until after the holidays to make a final vote? That would be my request, so we can get everyone together in a reasonable manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor. City Council. Like other people have said, I'm pretty disappointed in...
Your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dave Hatson, sixty-seven oh eight West Shore Drive. Saturday was the first I heard about this also, and so it's disappointing that we haven't had any notice. I thought we put this to bed three years ago. And at that time, when we, the street was discussed, it was voted down by most, or it was, you showed, most of the people on West Shore did not want that sidewalk put in, and as the engineers discussed it, it was found to be almost a diff, very difficult, if not impossible, thing to do without ruining most people's front lawns. I'm surprised, well, I won't... It's interesting that there is a couple tonight that wanted that on West Shore. I wasn't even aware of anybody between sixty-sixth and seventieth that were for that. So anyway, I'm disappointed that I wasn't aware of it. I'm pretty active in the community. Thursday, I'm on, going to some meeting for the Edina planning thing, and it would be nice to have some time, whether it be to the next meeting in December or January, to find out more about this and why, all of a sudden, West Shore is back on the list again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Hi.
Evening.
Mayor, council members. Kathy Nelson, and I live at seventy-one seventeen West Shore Drive. I found out about it also through some, I think a neighbor must have gone out and passed out a little information, so it was good to know. But I do have some concerns. I really, I like the connecting to the schools and to, you know, the larger area of Edina. I'm just not sure, I think I really appreciate it when you take into consideration, you know, our views as well. I think that is really important. So a couple of my concerns are, I was driving on West Shore, and the concern, it is, it's rolling at the beginning from sixty-sixth down to seventieth, and with the ice, I didn't even think of that part, but with the ice, with kids on little bikes, I, I wouldn't put my grandchild on, on that part of West Shore at all. So now, it's a connector street, but then the sidewalk stops at Hibiscus. So where are we connecting to? There are no sidewalks that I'm aware of that are going to go east over to Cornelia. Now, I do know that some sidewalks are proposed on Wooddale and then around to the school. The other concern that I have about West Shore is, I know in Edina, we are environmentally really savvy, and we want to be green, and so I think it's, I think it's a law that if you're building a new home and you take out a tree, you need to replace it. I'm wondering what, maybe that isn't, but what is the plan to replace some of these old boulevard trees that are going to be taken out? I, I really feel that that needs to be addressed, too. Let's see. The other thing is, I was driving on West Shore in particular with some of the hills and the slopes of the land, there will be a lot of, it's going to be expensive to do sidewalks because, I know we live in a split-level home, there are lots of those, so there's hills, hills coming down to the street, so cutting in ten feet up, it's going to be quite an expense. So I love the idea of sidewalks, and I am a walker, and I'm a new grandma, but I'm not sure that West Shore is the best street to have the sidewalk on. I feel that we can be connected and leave out West Shore and have the community oneness that we all desire here in Edina. I've lived in Edina more than I've lived anywhere else. Grew up here, left, my father built many homes in Edina, and I love it, and I, I do care, and I want to thank you for your concern, for your listening ear.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Paul Nelson, fifty-two twenty Dugan Plaza. Just want to thank you for bringing this forward tonight. I was hoping we were going to get a plan, a plan approved tonight, but it sounds like we're going to wait a little bit, which, for more public input, is, is, I think, that's a good thing. I am, however, excited to hear how all the neighbors have gotten together over this issue. I think if we actually had sidewalks, they might have known each other by now, but I'm, I'm glad that hopefully sidewalks will be coming soon to, to connect the city. Just one point that I heard over and over, and I, I actually came down to say this just because it wasn't being said anywhere, is that oftentimes, it talked about taking my front yard or my neighbors, me against my neighbor across the street. I don't think it's really taking anybody's front yard. It's taking, there, there's already a right-of-way in front of your house that, that appears to be your yard, but it's really the city right-of-way. And one of the reasons they look at doing this during the reconstruction process is when they do put a sidewalk in one side and the street in, they'll take that total distance and kind of re-center that, that road and determine where the road will be and where the sidewalk will be. So I don't think that's ever been discussed. I think that I just wanted to bring that point up. Also wanted to point out that I think the staff has done a great job in pinpointing reasons as for why each sidewalk should go in place. I don't believe that's become public, totally public yet, but I would like to see that possibly become public information because it, it was some dedicated effort putting that together. So again, I thank you. I look forward to connecting the city with sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Art Thelman. Yes, it's that guy. I'm fifty-one thirty-two Valleyview Road, and just to put this in context with all the people that were talking about Maddox, I live on the street that hits Mildred, then hits your street. So my piece, my section, very short section of Valleyview, crashes right into Mildred, and it's no surprise that that's a crash zone. On the complete other east side, where Normdale Road and Valleyview Road connect just by Clover Ridge there, that's all, there are two crash zones there, one is you come around the corner and one at Clover Ridge. And when, I, I, I have to compliment Mr. Nolan, Mr. Milner, they've given me all kinds of information, that I've read more stuff than you can imagine, but one of the primary pieces that came out of all this reading and looking at things is that, you know, there, there's these crash zones that you're going to be putting sidewalks and people going across, and I don't know if you've seen the modern-day kid on a skateboard and a bike, they do it now on a bike without hands and texting, and, and it's just fascinating that they have the skills to do that, but they also crash. So shooting them through an intersection where there are cars and crash zones, I think, is not a great idea. I am pleased to hear that there may be consideration, and I would invite each of the council members, when you go out to your adjoining, your, your quadrant meetings, I think they were called, that you bear in mind when you listen to people that a lot of these sidewalk issues, the negative, it may be something as simple as a timing issue. It may be that that neighborhood at that point in time isn't ready for a sidewalk, doesn't think they need a sidewalk, and when we looked at the Valleyview stuff, the act, there was actually a story in The Sun-Current. You, you mentioned the sidewalk to nowhere. That was the name of the article, "The Sidewalk to Nowhere", and I have the same sentiment, sentiment as those folks, and hope that we can, in these meetings, talk through. But my other issue is, in our reconstruction project for two thousand fourteen, the sidewalk was removed before that was approved. I think that causes a special issue because now the sidewalk's back in, the redo of the comprehensive plan that was just put in place in August of two thousand nine, and has really that much changed the neighborhood where in two thousand and nine, there wasn't a need for a sidewalk, and two thousand and fourteen, there is. I, I guess I find that really hard to believe because I pulled out the cover sheet of everybody that was on that plan, three of you are sitting here tonight, and what did you miss back then that you're seeing now? I, I guess I'm just shocked by that. I mean, that neighborhood has not changed, and would like to hope that you stick with that decision and we're not back here in December fighting the sidewalk again on Valleyview Road. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Art. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Get a motion and a second to close the public hearing? Any discussion on that motion? Those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who say nay, carried. We've got some questions that were raised during the course of testimony.
Sure. I was asked about a comment I made about the comp plan, so I'll answer that. I didn't say that West Shore was on the comp plan. I just said we had had a sidewalk plan with most of these roads, not all of them, in the comp plan back in two thousand eight.
The first gentleman that testified asked what it meant to be a connector street as opposed to a collector's street. You may want to comment on that.
As I referred to earlier, the, the reference to a local connector comes from the draft Living Streets Plan that is currently being prepared by staff and has not been put in front of council or the public yet. That is still yet to happen over the coming two or three months. That, so there is, that, that plan, that draft plan has been circulated among the Transportation Commission, also the Planning Commission, and also as part of a work session with council, so those documents are public, and that's what I believe that they're, the residents are referring to. This particular sidewalk plan and proposed amendments, comprehensive plan amendment, does not speak about local connectors at all. It only talks about arterials, collectors, and local streets as defined in the current comprehensive plan.
All right. And then Nancy Thorvilsen raised the issue, a few issues. First one was, if the sidewalk system were proposed and, and it went forward, she's on Oaklawn, how's the, you know, how does the sidewalk interface with the driveway retaining walls? If it affects the sprinkler system, how does all that costing get paid for?
The costs that are associated with constructing the sidewalk would come out of the PACS Fund, pedestrian cyclist safety fund. Those retaining walls, regrading, all of that is part of the sidewalk cost, so that's why some sidewalks are more expensive than others to construct, that range I gave you earlier, because some of them have more, more impacts that have to be paid for.
Any disruption of a sprinkler system or a pet containment system, that all gets covered in the cost?
The cities work with the homeowners to get that taken care of.
All right.
And I think there was a couple issues, not directly stated, but worries about driveways and how they would come into the sidewalk, and I know you have a certain grade that you won't go above when you're putting in a sidewalk next to a driveway so that the driveway stays passable.
That's correct. Yes, I could defer to Director Milner for specifics about that if he wishes.
Yeah, council, we're list, what I'm hearing is impacts. So a lot of people ask what side of the sidewalk we're putting it on, are the driveway impacts, and we, we look at those impacts, trees, driveways, utilities, the grades you mentioned. A lot of our minimum cross slopes, which you just asked, needs to be a two percent cross slope on the sidewalk. We also have lights and landscaping, and we tend to try to avoid those things and put the sidewalk on the side with the least amount of impacts. One way to do that is to narrow boulevards. One way is to shift the roadway, as Mr. Nelson brought up, but really try to balance those impacts between the various homeowners. And we can also narrow the roadway itself to make room for a sidewalk so we're not impacting those front yards as much. So those are the things that I've been hearing on the impacts.
The other thing that maybe you can speak to, because we've gone over this for a lot of years, are traffic calming, and when you can't have a police sitting on the street twenty-four-seven to regulate the traffic, what have we found works for traffic calming and what have we found that doesn't work for traffic calming? And that things that were mentioned were obviously speed bumps, stop signs, the police, and then the feeling that sidewalks were not traffic calming.
Yeah, what we've seen in, in the studies have shown that speed bumps and stop signs actually increase the speed between them. So even if you put stop signs every block, the speed is actually faster in that mid-block range than it was prior to that because people are trying to catch up on their daily travels. What we tend to see with sidewalks is when we put sidewalks in, we put boulevard landscaping, it creates a narrower feel for the roadway. Or we actually narrow the roadway. Most of our streets are thirty feet wide. We tend to go to twenty-seven foot wide or even a twenty-four foot wide, and that narrowing, that feel, creates friction with the drivers and actually slows them down when we add these types of facilities on our local roadway.
So is enforcement a permanent or a temporary calming mechanism?
Temporary. Member Bennett?
Member Bennett?
Question also, because I understand that there's a gap between this, the speed overage and what is felt to be enforceable. So somebody may be driving over the limit, but they may or may not be ticketed because a ticket below a certain speed will not hold up if prosecuted? We've been told, we've been told that our department won't charge anything at least five miles, five miles under, I mean, five miles over the speed limit.
I think that's common course. I mean, speeding is speeding, but you're right, there is sort of a threshold before the pullover's going to happen.
Sure, but we also know that, that percentage of, of risk of serious injury and fatality goes up with speed, so you've got this window where you can't effectively enforce, but where it's more dangerous. If we can return, there was another question that one of the people raised about the tax...
There are more.
Yeah, many, many more questions, but one was about the taxes that are assigned to a right of, or to that front yard, the loss of the property to a sidewalk. Will they be compensated with the, with reduced property tax? And Attorney Matic, it's my understanding that the transportation right-of-way that the city holds is not considered to be part of taxable real property?
That, I, yes, there's been situations where that hasn't played out, but when the, when the county looks at what's there, they look at the whole right-of-way, not just the edge of the curb, if you will, because that right-of-way, as was discussed, is already dedicated to the city, for the city's use.
So there's no tax compensation, but there's already been a tax effect or a tax reduction to the homeowner for having that transportation right-of-way on their property?
That's my understanding, is how the county handles it, yes.
I think the other thing that we've found in putting in sidewalks is that we haven't seen a loss of value. We've actually seen an increase of value. We haven't done a study recently on it, but there's nothing in our taxes that we've done, and we do quadrants every year to, for a more in-depth study that has shown us that tech, that sidewalks at any point are a negative for a homeowner's value.
And that's a, that's a trend, that's a, there are national studies that demonstrate that as well.
Mr. Jeffrey asked, "Who would shovel the sidewalks on West Shore?"
the sidewalk on the side with the least amount of impacts. One way to do that is to narrow boulevards, one way is to shift the roadway, as Mr. Nelson brought up, but really try to balance those impacts between the various homeowners. And we can also narrow the roadway itself to make room for a sidewalk, so we're not impacting those front yards as much. So those are the things that I've been hearing on the impacts.
The other thing that maybe you can speak to, because we've gone over this for a lot of years, are traffic calming. And when you can't have a police sitting on the street 24/7 to regulate the traffic, what have we found works for traffic calming and what have we found that doesn't work for traffic calming? And the things that were mentioned were obviously speed bumps, stop signs, the police, and then the feeling that sidewalks were not traffic calming.
Yeah, what we've seen in the studies have shown that speed bumps and stop signs actually increase the speed between them. So even if you put stop signs every block, the speed is actually faster in that mid-block range than it was prior to that because people are trying to catch up on their daily travels. What we tend to see with sidewalks is when we put sidewalks in, we put boulevard landscaping, it creates a narrower feel for the roadway. Or we actually narrow the roadway. Most of our streets are 30 feet wide, we tend to go to 27-foot wide or even a 24-foot wide. And that narrowing, that feel, creates friction with the drivers and actually slows them down when we add these types of facilities on our local roadway.
So is enforcement a permanent or a temporary calming mechanism?
Temporary.
Member Bennett?
Question also, because I understand that there's a gap between this, the speed overage and what is felt to be enforceable. So somebody may be driving over the limit, but they may or may not be ticketed because a ticket below a certain speed will not hold up if prosecuted? We've been told, we've been told that our department won't charge anything at least five miles, five miles under, I mean, five miles over the speed limit.
I think that's common course. I mean, speeding is speeding, but you're right, there is sort of a threshold before the pullover is going to happen.
Sure, but we also know that that percentage of risk of serious injury and fatality goes up with speed. So you've got this window where you can't effectively enforce, but where it's more dangerous. If we can return, there was another question that one of the people raised about the tax, yeah, many more questions, but one was about the taxes that are assigned to a right of, or to that front yard, the loss of the property to a sidewalk, will they be compensated with reduced property tax? And Attorney Maddox, it's my understanding that the transportation right-of-way that the city holds is not considered to be part of taxable real property?
That, yes, there's been situations where that hasn't played out. When the county looks at what's there, they look at the whole right-of-way, not just the edge of the curb, if you will. Because that right-of-way, as was discussed, is already dedicated to the city, for the city's use.
So there's no tax compensation, but there's already been a tax effect or a tax reduction to the homeowner for having that transportation right-of-way on their property?
That's my understanding, is how the county handles it, yes.
I think the other thing that we've found in putting in sidewalks is that we haven't seen a loss of value, we've actually seen an increase of value. We haven't done a study recently on it, but there's nothing in our taxes that we've done. And we do quadrants every year to, for a more in-depth study that has shown us that sidewalks at any point are a negative for a homeowner's value.
And that's a trend, that's a, there are national studies that demonstrate that as well.
Mr. Jeffrey asked, who would shovel the sidewalks on West Shore?
Well, as things stand right now, that West Shore Drive would be maintained by the residents, is my understanding. It is recommended in the active routes to school plan, but there's not a direct connection to the school, and I think that's maybe open to some interpretation that we need to discuss here and going into the future. Staff has been working with, the engineering staff's been working with Public Works through this entire process in terms of some of the increased maintenance that may come out of building this new sidewalk infrastructure and looking at currently how state aid roads and sidewalks that are adjacent to parks and schools are plowed, but staff's open to looking at some additional maintenance that could be paid for either out of the PACS fund or some other source.
Mayor. And on that point, can I, in the comp plan, it says sidewalks located on state aid roads or within the public school zones will be maintained by the city of Adana. But when we're talking about local collectors, that terminology and designation used in Living Streets Plan, and if we consider allowing city-maintained facilities that are local collectors, would we have to go back and then amend this comp plan language again?
I would assume, I would assume that we would if it states specifically in the comprehensive plan that those are the only streets that are maintained by city forces.
So there might be some alternative language that could, that could be a segue, like it says sidewalks located in other areas must be maintained by the property owners unless designated otherwise in another city-approved plan or something like that.
Sure.
So if you have some modifying language, we could then, it would then allow for that idea to be considered down the road and still be consistent with the comp plan.
That's correct.
I have a question about, after you're done writing. I have a question about boulevard trees. The lots on Maddox Lane are not large, they're about 80 by 120 for at least some of the lots that I did a little research on. And if, it's likely that more than one of those properties has a boulevard tree, maybe a legacy tree, how do we, in an area where a sidewalk does go in, how, not assuming that it's going to be Maddox Lane, but how do we protect the tree?
We have an example of a project being constructed next year in the Arden Park neighborhood where, yes, the documentation does state that the desired boulevard is five feet, the desired sidewalk is five feet. But engineering staff has made a great, a big point in making sure that those types of impacts and particular trees are accounted for. So in the Arden Park neighborhood, much of the sidewalk was necessarily put against the back of curb and the street was moved over a little bit in order to accommodate those existing boulevard trees. So staff, and since I've been here, it's only been about a year and a half, but I know of next to zero trees, legacy trees, certainly that had to be taken for a sidewalk. We don't, we don't take a 10-foot template on the roadway and lay it across and take all the trees. We save trees whenever we can. And I work with homeowners, a question was asked earlier about tree replacement, if a tree does have to be removed for the project, a tree, the tree is replaced.
When there's a driveway that has a grade, and we kind of approached this earlier and came up with like a 2% grade, but I know some driveways are greater than a 2% grade, such as a Long Interlock and Boulevard. If a sidewalk does go in along an area like that, how is the driveway, how do you deal with a driveway like that?
Director Milner?
Many of those cases, we'll push the sidewalk to the curb line, don't have a boulevard because that could reduce the slopes we need on the driveway. Many cases, we work with the property owner and replace the driveway further up, sometimes all the way up to the garage if we have to, because we try not to make it any worse. Again, we may shift the whole roadway over to reduce those limits, or if the impacts warrant, we'll put the sidewalk on the other side. Those are the types of things we look at when we start looking at what side of the sidewalk we put it on. So we take all concessions we can not to make driveways any worse than worse when we're done than when we started.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Rich is a data-driven person. We know that from knowing him over the years. And so what, he wants to know what the basis is for the needs. So as we go into some of these quadrant meetings, you might want to think about that, you know, the basis for the need, any survey data, anything else like that that we have. Mr. Paulson raised the issue about process. When does the 500-foot notice rule apply? And Mr. Teague, you may be able to field that one.
I can take that one certainly. The application that was, that was put there on the dais, that was for a specific development project where there's a comprehensive plan amendment that's required on a specific project. That's when we notify property owners within 1,000 feet. This is a citywide comprehensive plan amendment, so we would follow the same procedure, excuse me, as we did back in 2008 with notice in the local newspapers, on the website, et cetera.
One of the residents raised the issue of whether there was any chance of postponing this decision till after the holidays for further input. But we've got some hearings coming up. I think we've got a hearing coming up on several projects in early December, mid-December, December 9th.
Yeah, December night, we're bringing the Arden Park neighborhood, Countryside, Prospect Knowles, and Dewey Hill. In the Arden Park neighborhood, many of those sidewalks have been discussed previously with the council. This plan wouldn't change. A lot of those discussions, and the Countryside project has sidewalks involved, and those are all active routes to school sidewalks that are already approved as part of that plan. So I'm not seeing a big change in our street reconstruction programs, sidewalks. We do have some standalone project, sidewalk projects for next year that we'll be considering later in the year that may be affected by this as we prioritize, but I think for that December 9th, I don't see this plan being approved or not changing those recommendations at this time.
So it would be beneficial from a process standpoint to stick with the schedule of hearing this the first week in December, to stay in sequence with the special hearing that we're going to have, all these public hearings on these other proposed projects.
Yeah, we'd want to stay on that public hearing schedule, definitely.
I think the other thing that we've discovered over the years is that if we move it to January or move it to February, we have people that leave for the winter or they leave for the month. And there's always some, some, August is bad because young families take family vacations. We've learned over the years, there's never really a good time to do anything. So we are an active council 12 months of the year. So putting it off, I don't see the value to that. I see a detriment because of the upcoming projects. The West Shore rebuild, the one point that I know, when we did talk about redoing it and at the time that we talked about doing sidewalks on West Shore, we did not have a way to pay for them. You were going to have to pay for them. It's one of the reasons we worked so hard to find a citywide payment plan for sidewalks, because there was a point where we really wanted to put sidewalks in on the street that goes to Cornelia, Cornelia Drive years ago. That's probably nine years ago. And we didn't. And I know the mayor and I have regretted it for nine years because the neighbors were so opposed to having to pay for it. So this really has been a process that our city has worked really hard on to find ways to make it more palatable and not have to charge the person that has the sidewalk in front of them. So I know the West Shore project was before that ability to have the city pay and not the resident pay. The other thing is, for us, street reconstruction takes a vote of four of us, but a sidewalk takes a vote of three of us. So it has a much lower threshold for passing than a street reconstruction project does.
This is for you, Mr. Milner. Art Thelman over on Valleyview Road testified, and of course, the project over there was the Birchcrest B neighborhood project that we approved for letting a year ago and didn't get the kind of bids we expected to see. And so it's going to be re-let.
No, it's not going to be re-let.
Just delayed the construction.
The contractor asked for delay.
2015.
All right. So regardless, we made a decision when we approved that project that we weren't going to put sidewalks in. And so there's some confusion in the neighborhood over there, but now the plan shows up, the sidewalk plan, and the sidewalk is back in on Valleyview where we had taken it out two years ago. And it's a little bit of that same issue with the West Shore Drive folks, although we have a difference there in view of the fact that it's now in the safe routes to school policy where it wasn't in there in '09, whenever we did that before. So would it be my understanding when, that when this project moves forward, it's, there will not be sidewalks as part of that project, but they still could end up potentially in the plan if the council were to approve the plan as is?
Correct, Mayor. I think this plan, as Mark Nolan mentioned, this is a 20 to 30 year plan, if not longer. We don't anticipate, our plan was never to put the sidewalk back in on Valleyview Road for construction for next year. I think the West Shore Drive sidewalk is the same issue. We just reconstructed those streets. We won't be back reconstructing those streets for many years. Now if council or some other petition comes forward for us to look at sidewalks in that interim period before street reconstruction, I think then we would consider them. But many of these streets have been recently reconstructed. We're not going to be back for a long time because we have pressing needs in other streets for the pavement condition and utility. So from a staff level, we never considered putting that Valleyview sidewalk back in for 2015 unless we got direction from, from the council.
Member Swenson.
The ironic thing about the conversation, though, for sidewalks, because there were three of us that supported it, is that those who didn't support it said that they didn't see that it was part of a network. And now it does connect to Maddox. So you, eventually a network gets built out. Unfortunately, it just doesn't always get built out all at the same time. I know that we have a plan, obviously, to connect Hanson Road all the way down to Vernon and Benton. We have a plan to connect all the way over to Countryside School from Highway 100. So there is a, there is a walking circle in that neighborhood that's, and it is all part of one plan. It may not get built all one year, but it will get out, built out eventually. The first year that we had money, we connected sidewalks that had started but didn't, never got to be finished. We connected a sidewalk by Concord School because the kids couldn't walk to school because it was too dangerous. So we started out with spending money where it really, really was necessary. But as we slowly worked through all these projects, you know, we may build a project and then the next part of it may not be built for a couple more years, but eventually it'll be there and its usefulness gets enhanced tenfold, so.
All right. Another point I was going to ask about, and it just kind of slipped away here. So is the, let me ask it this way, is the notion that we'll generally expand the sidewalk system in conjunction with street reconstruction projects, or will there be situations where there'll be a one-off sidewalk construction project that might occur in the future, depending on whether it's a safe route to school, for example, or a safe route to a park, or on a A minor arterial or a collector's street?
Yeah, I think we'll have both. So probably 60% of our funding goes to the street reconstruction programs. We have maybe 50 to 40 to 50% of additional funding that we're prioritizing sidewalks, standalone sidewalk projects. So that was approved this year on Vernon and York, some of those standalone ones. Currently, Mark and ETC are working on prioritizing some standalone sidewalk projects for next year and doing those where we see the needs in the active routes or some of the very busy, high-volume, high-speed roadways in town. So we'll be taking advantage of our street recon, but that doesn't take away, typically doesn't use up all that PACS funding in a year.
All right. So I think folks would be interested in knowing how we go about prioritizing those sidewalk construction projects that aren't associated with a street reconstruction project.
Yep. We typically do that with some of the petitions we've received over the years where we didn't have funding in the past and now we do. Interlockin comes to, it comes to mind. We'll look at the active routes to school, some of those missing segments that Councilmember Swenson has just mentioned. So we'll continue to look at that and provide that data on why we're selecting those typical standalone sidewalk projects. Sometimes it's grant, you know, we had grant money from Hennepin County, so that was a 50/50 split on some of those county roadway sidewalks. So we chose those this year to complete on York and Vernon.
Do you think there's any way to accurately predict through a map if it were approved, a city sidewalk plan, as to when a particular project might get done so folks had a better idea of when, when an issue may come up that they want to address that's a little bit more immediate in time?
Yeah, I think we have one now for our street reconstruction program on our MSA and local streets. We have those maps. There's no reason we couldn't add sidewalk, like a standalone sidewalk. Some of those sidewalks will be within the street reconstruction areas. We could show those, but we could also show the standalone projects for a year or two out. That's kind of what our thinking is, similar to the street projects. You know, those can move around a little bit based on needs, but I think that's something we could present in an interactive map on the website.
Because it seems to me, just to use two of the projects that we've talked about tonight, Birchcrest B, which is the Valleyview Road or the West Shore Drive, based on your comments, it doesn't sound generally like we plan on going back there for quite a few years. So is there some way of predicting when we might come back to that neighborhood and address the issue of sidewalks?
We could put it based on pavement, pavement life of the street, that'd be one thing, because that's what's going to drive whether we come back or not. Or unless we get, you know, the petition's always the wild card. We don't know if someone's going to petition for that sidewalk along those streets. But if we base it on the street life, we could put an estimate. But then our map would be nothing but colors for 50 years, little pieces all over. So I think if we can just show the next couple of years, that would notify people two or three years out of what our anticipated plans are.
Okay, that's hopeful. Thank you. Member Bennett?
Thank you. And to this question of priority, I mean, we have asked, I think there are people in the community through the SHIP program and others, how do you prioritize? And the data that's been gathered and the criteria lists that have been formed are exactly what we were asking for. You look at the, at the traffic volume, you look at the speeds, the 85th percentile speeds, you look at the, you can look at road width, you look at connection points, but you also look at a network. How do you move people around an area safely? Because if you have a high-volume, high-speed roadway, maybe the people living on that roadway do or do not walk for exercise, but that roadway becomes a moat to everybody else who wants to move around that area, even to cross, even to walk for a block along that busier, faster-speed roadway to get to someplace else. And so I think what I appreciate about the document is how responsive it is to things that were requested by the community, by members of the community who've testified before and said, "Give us data." This is data. This is, this corresponds, and I know that there was some request at the Planning Commission to do some overlaying of maps. Transit was one of the things that was mentioned. I know that the Met Council controls some of those locations, so that is one that could have a moving target. But we can definitely correspond and have corresponded sidewalk locations to the designations of roadways, and those have been ordered in terms of, again, vehicle, amount of vehicles per day, speeds, adjacent land uses. There's a system that's been in place for decades, the roadway functional classification system. This isn't new, it hasn't been invented for this process. So to tie all of these different criteria that have existed along with identification of priorities to the community now, for instance, the active routes to school, again, this is exactly what we're requesting. I appreciate the fact it's been rolled into a single document.
I didn't have any other questions on my list. Does anybody else have anything or a comment?
I just wanted to ask the Transportation Committee to look at one segment of road that is not on this. And it's a segment of road that is the south end of Glengarry going to Highlands Lake and Highlands Park.
Glengarry Parkway.
Yep. So you have it on the north end of Glengarry, and then that connects behind, along the Highlands Lake to Interlockin. But you've missed that one block between, and you're going to construct, when you do road reconstruction, which you don't have on the next five-year list, this would be the time that you would do the two blocks that go, that go down to the park from Vernon to Interlockin. So can you have them look at that?
We sure will, yes.
I think they missed that. I think that's where they want to at least put the sidewalk, which is better than on the road to, to the west.
Okay. Thank you, Member Swenson.
All right. Folks, thanks for coming this evening and sharing your thoughts with us. And feel free to submit anything supplemental in writing to us.
I'll move, I'll move to table this matter to the
I'll move, I'll move to table this matter to the December 2nd meeting.
All right. We've got a motion to second to table this matter until December 2nd. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carrie.
Can we talk about a vehicle if you want to come to the next meetings that we're going to hold, though?
Yeah. Talk a little bit about the process for how we go about contacting people. Mr. Nolan, thoughts on that?
Can we have Mark sit down? Let's have him sit down. I'll be involved with it, but it won't be my decision. So, I believe the question regarding notification for the meetings is that, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you, Mayor.
For the meetings, how are we going to go about trying to be as effective and efficient as we can be?
Well, we'll work with our Communications Department in, in coming up with a plan for that. Again, as was stated before, these, these meetings are to be coming up pretty quickly now, within the next four or five weeks, so we'll use the existing channels that we normally use, and we'll have to talk about whether or not there's, there's other, other ways we can do this, short of sending letters to every, every resident in the city.
Yep.
So, we'll have that discussion.
All right. Thank you. That concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda this evening, and the next portion of the agenda deals with community comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to bring an issue to the council's attention that isn't otherwise on the agenda this evening? I see someone coming forward.
Hi, Mayor, and Councilmember Dan Dulos, 4609 Bruce Avenue. I'm just addressing you tonight to bring up some concerns about the process by which a total teardown recently occurred last Monday on October 27th at 4505 Arden Avenue, 1926 Tudor-style home that was considered a heritage preservation resource. As you know, in 2010, a request to remove this historic resource, classification for this home was disallowed by the Heritage Preservation Board, denied at that time. In February of 2014, the matter came back to the Heritage Preservation Board again, this time as a whole-house rehabilitation. The HPB agreed that the whole-house rehabilitation was in essence of total demolition and voted to continue the request until the next meeting to give, meeting to give the board a chance to gather more info. On March 11th, 2014, the applicant withdrew his proposal for a whole-house rehabilitation and instead came forward with a modified plan for a new detached garage and changes to the street-facing facade of the home at 4505 Arden. The proposed changes to the front facade were felt to be such that they would still preserve the essential character of the home. After much discussion, the Heritage Preservation Board approved a certificate of appropriateness for the garage and demolition of the rear portion of the home, but maintaining the front of the home, but with these multiple changes at that time. On April 22nd of 2014, the City Council heard an appeal of this decision by a resident. The City Council voted to deny the appeal, and the council's resolution was passed and included renovation of the front facade without a whole house demolition, which was included in that statement. Of note, this home was inhabited by renters until the end of August with no construction for almost six months after a final decision. This, there then became limited excavation, finally occurred in the past month or so, but no renovation or construction was performed. Apparently during the excavation, a question of the soundness of the foundation arose. My understanding is that the builder hired a structural engineer who concluded the foundation was unsafe. The city inspector apparently concurred, and in conjunction with other city staff, the builder was given a permit for total demolition of this home. This was done promptly this past Monday, without notification or input by the, to, to the Heritage Preservation Board, to my knowledge, the City Council or any of the neighbors. I actually participated in the process to revise the plan of treatment to close loopholes and ensure preservation of front facades of homes classified as historic resources back when we did this in 2008. I'm concerned that the safeguards which we put in place to preserve homes within the Country Club have been circumvented again. A new COA for the HP, from the HPB is really required for this change, to this project, to change it to a total demolition, and proof of a safety issue should have been part of that presentation to the Heritage Preservation Board. I feel that there's been a significant lapse in judgment by the city staff and that the decision of the HPB and the City Council have been ignored. I feel that this issue deserves a formal review by the City Council and, with publication of their findings and recommendations on how to prevent this from occurring again in the Country Club district in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dulos.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Ron Lamberton. I'm a, I'm a resident of 4108 Sunnyside Road. My wife and I have lived there for 20 years. This, tonight, I had not come with prepared comments, but tonight, there's a theme here about notification of the public and following rules and procedure. And to the previous speaker's comments, nothing was shared with the community surrounding this teardown on Arden Avenue. We live within 500 feet. We see the hole, and to borrow a comment that Councilmember Swenson used earlier, the wrecking ball literally fell out of the sky one day and took this house down. I'm not here to debate whether it was a renovation or that there was foundational issues. This is about notice. When I was first here as a, as a, as a member of the first move to the Country Club area, we petitioned the council to have a four-foot air conditioning unit from the front of our house to the, moved to the side of our house. It was required at that point in time that we lay 30 days and notify all, all residents within 500 feet of that renovation. That was for a four-foot cube air conditioning unit. A hole the size of a house is now on Arden Avenue, and no notification has been made. We need to follow the rules. That's why they're there. I'd appreciate the council ask the, the builder and the resident of this area, residents of this home, to take heed of those type of rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamberton. Anyone else? Director Teague, we talked a little bit about this by email today, and I believe you have a, a staff response with respect to the no notification on the demolition.
Yeah, well, this, this home wasn't deemed a complete teardown at the time that it was reviewed by the Heritage Board and the City Council. We suspected that that issue might come up, but they would have had to tear up the basement in order to determine if the, the foundation wasn't sound. But they did go through the, the COA process that the, the council did approve. When they, when they, in terms of getting the building permit to build what was approved by the council, they did go through the demolition process, so they, they followed the same procedure because it, we have that definition that if you tear down more than 50% of the structure, it's deemed a demolition. This did qualify for that. So, they did notify the neighbors. It's my understanding there was only one that attended that demolition meeting at the house, but they did follow our, our normal demolition practices for a teardown rebuild.
What was discovered relative to the foundation?
Yeah.
How did it end up being a complete teardown?
Yeah, the, the foundation, once they got it exposed, they found that it, it just was not in a, it wasn't adequately constructed in the first place, and it wasn't substantial enough to support the addition of, or the, the renovation of the home, so it was deemed, it was really a health and safety issue. So, there's no change to the building plan itself that was approved by the City Council. So, once the project is all completed, there will be no change from what was ultimately approved by the City Council. It's all just structurally building a foundation that's going to support the, the renovation of the home.
All right. Let our council come. Member Bennett, more questions?
Well, I spoke with Assistant Planner Rappi about this and was grateful that she had time to talk to me that morning, but I told her that I have several concerns. One is that I know that at repeat visits to the HPB, there was a request for information, the kind of reports that would only have been in the power of the property owner or builder to provide. And so, it appears that information was finally obtained, but there were requests for that in order to evaluate the situation earlier on. A second problem is that if, if a decision is made that one process is going to be followed, it's possible that people didn't even understand what notice was being sent out because there's a conflict. So, I think there's at least a lack of clarity in sending out a notice for a process that wasn't the process that had been approved. And then my third concern is, and I've expressed this before, including at the discussion that the council had, there is a public resource here in terms of staff time and in terms of the commission time, and it is, when a process is kind of changed midstream, it, it's a question of, of is the support there in the neighborhood for it? Is the process then being followed? Because this is a lot of staff time and a lot of public money that's being spent on this process. And so, I guess it would be best to have rules that are clear, standards of what information has to be provided for the decision-making, so that decision-making can be the best it can be and it can be adhered to, and then finally, that notice, notice can be informative and constructive, but I think there are problems farther back in the process with respect, again, to the, the testing and what's being provided for information, so that the best decision-making can be made in the time that staff and a commission, the Heritage Preservation Board are spending on it.
So, we're moving on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and the first matter before us in that section of the agenda this evening is the request to have a collaborative development planning agreement entered into between the city and our selected developer partner, Fraunshu Commercial Real Estate Group. Mr. Nuenendorf, do you have this matter?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Providing a little bit of background on the topic in front of us, on September 16th of this year, the City Council selected Fraunshu Commercial Real Estate Group as the preferred team to explore public-private partnership on the former public worksite over in, in the Grandview District. At the time, Fraunshu was one of 10 teams that responded to our request for interest on the site and was selected through an open process where the teams were interviewed, made a presentation, responded to our, to our questions with answers, et cetera. Since Fraunshu was selected by the City Council, we, staff has been working for the last month and a half to, to prepare the agreement that's in front of you this evening. This agreement identifies the terms of this collaborative planning process. Within the, within the agreement, there's a work plan that identifies responsibilities of the city, responsibilities of the Fraunshu team, with ultimately, the conclusion would be to present multiple scenarios or multiple options of what could happen at that property. Each of the options would contain a public use and a private use that would work synergistically together. So, at this point, we're not proposing any specific project, but what we are proposing is to enter into this agreement to engage in a process to help us decide as a community, what's the best thing that fits on that property. Presuming everything goes well, the cost of this work would be borne by Fraunshu. Presuming that there's a glitch somewhere in the, in the process or somewhere either party decides to part ways and do something differently, the city would help share the costs that were incurred for the, for the consultants that are exploring this public-private collaboration. There's a great amount of detail in the agreement itself. I'm happy to answer any questions on that. Dave Anderson with Fraunshu is with us this evening as well, and he's happy to answer questions as, if you have any for, for either of us.
Questions for Mr. Nuenendorf? Member Rendell?
Looking at, looking forward as to, to what, what can go on that piece of property, is not a large piece of property. Is Fraunshu prepared for an outcome that might be 100% public use?
Dave might want to answer that question specifically, but let me offer you, you my opinion.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
Sure.
I want to go into this knowing
Sure.
... that one of the objectives that we are hearing loud and clear is that public use is our primary, our primary goal, and certainly, one of the things that I learned in listening to the presentations is the importance of public use as a catalyst for the uses around that space. So, one thing that occurred to me today that I thought I would just throw out there as something to think about in forming this collaborative partnership is, I know it's not mine. I turned mine off.
Sorry.
That's okay. But I just, I just want to put that out there, that, that I, I want to be sure that this is a partnership that will tolerate something that might well end up being 100% public on that site. Not that, I'm not going to presuppose what the conclusion's going to be, but I want that to be one of the options.
I would disagree with your assumption, frankly. We're following the guidance of the, of the Large Cat and the decisions that have been made by this council, and in the recitals to the agreement, it says that the city desires to develop the city properties of their project and includes a combination of public and private uses that work as an integrated whole. The, the direction that we have had all along is that it be a collaborative effort to create potential redevelopment scenarios that include both public and private elements. So, the notion that all of a sudden we're switching gears and that this is going to be a predominantly public use or a solely public use defies the prior directions of this council and also the, the CAT. So, I think it's a, it's an unfair question to ask Mr. Fraunshu, who's our private development partner, has been asked to develop the scenarios that involve public and private uses. If we get to the point where we don't like the uses that they're proposing and we think it's a purely, it ought to have a purely public purpose, that's, that, that's in our court, I think.
Okay.
But I don't think we should be asking him if he can live with the, the idea that it's going to be a purely public use when that's not his charge.
I actually, I actually disagree. I think, I think I would like to hear from Mr. Fraunshu about that outcome, and the reason why is, as we talked about, the core values around this piece of property from the beginning. If you remember, the first Grandview survey, 66% of the respondents wanted to see it retained solely for public use. And I understand that there's a disagreement in the CAT. The majority supported a different process in what was selected. We're down the road now, but I think, I think that's a valid question to ask, and we don't want to presuppose anything. If it's going to be a truly organic public process, let's let it go forward and let's see what sifts out. We have some indications from the, the park survey that there is continued interest in a community center. And if you look at, just, this is a slight digression, but if you look at catalytic districts, think about the High Line in New York. It all started with a catalytic public element. So, based on my understanding of not only what can be done on the site, but other opportunities for a developer around the site, I think it's a, it's a question that I would like to hear answered. Why not, why not know that answer that we have Mr. Fraunshu here so that we can understand that as we go forward? I, the other, the other, well, I'll, I have another comment, but let's leave it there for right now.
I'm happy to weigh in.
It really was a, more a rhetorical question than anything, but I just want that out there. It's, it's three acres. It's not that big a piece of property, so I, I just wanted the idea that it had only one use to be out there.
I think that question's in the community, so I don't think it's a
Yeah.
irrelevant question to ask.
It is.
Because people are wondering if this is a developer-led process and the public use gathering, information gathering process led to more of a 100% public use. How would the developer deal with that? I have, I have some ideas about that, but I think it's a, a point that's out there and it, and it should be addressed. So, you said you had an idea about that.
So, that, that option is anticipated in the agreement. As I mentioned, the agreement is structured presuming that the course that the City Council has directed is, is maintained, but should that change, there's always a provision for that. So, our goal in this process is, is to come up with multiple options to consider for the site. Each of those options would have a public and a private Each of those options would have a public and a private component. Another option is always do nothing. There's nothing in this agreement that binds the city council to mandatorily select one of the options that's assembled. If we have a sense that this is, that the public-private direction is not the way to go, there's provisions in here to terminate the agreement and go our separate ways. So there, working with our city attorney, there's a number of different provisions that are included in this agreement to account for all possible outcomes.
In terms of the public engagement, there's a schedule, Exhibit B. So it looks like we've got, as part of the contract, two discovery sessions. And I wanted to get some feedback from the rest of the council about using a process that more closely aligns with what we're doing for Vision 2030, because I think from the original Grandview survey, very few people are familiar with the Grandview redevelopment framework. 9% very familiar, 20% somewhat familiar, 46% were not familiar, 16% not too familiar. So there's a public information issue. And I'm wondering if we could do something where we have a kickoff meeting and have this think tank, kind of like we did for Vision 2030, and then allow for some meetings in a box that goes out to these, I call them affinity groups, but these smaller organizations around the city, coupled with something like, that's envisioned here, these at-large public meetings. It's something we're doing for Vision 2030, looking 20 or 30 years out, and I think if you look at the framework, we have a long-term vision for the site and the district as well that might lend itself to that type of process.
Member Swenson?
Fraunchu's bringing in a group that is going to do the public engagement part. I don't want to presuppose and tell them what they have to do, I might want to hear what they're going to do ahead of time and have some input, but I don't want to micromanage how this, they may have a better idea of how to do it than what we have with Vision. So, where I don't have any problem having some input in it, I have a problem with designing it ahead of time for a group that does this for a living. So, I'm not interested in telling them what they have to do. I'm interested in hearing what, in responding to it, but I have no interest in telling them ahead of time.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. I have two areas of concern chiefly, and one of them is that is the statistics on how many people are not aware or not very aware after repeated phases of public involvement, and some significant involvement by some people. There are people who've spent a lot of time on this. So, I don't know why we have the gap in public awareness that we have, except we've experienced that in, well, in any event, that I think needs to be addressed. Another thing that I think is a big area of concern is, in addition to having these processes which have resulted in guiding principles, which are helpful, and they have resulted in a framework which has some specificity that we are and are not addressing, we have some other forms of measurement as well. The survey that Member Sprague mentions, in addition, we have the parks needs assessment process nearing its completion now in terms of that public survey part, but then we have the master planning part. And where is this process going to take into account the data that we already have that people have contributed to the, in the community, as well as how are we going to connect it to the processes that we're engaged in now that result in incorporating the needs that have been identified by the community into a master plan that will address those needs? And I look at the timeline, and I'm concerned that although there are somewhat parallel tracks, this one is designed to get to the finish line, possibly before the master plan gets to the finish line, and then are we saying that we're not going to look at this site to fit some of the needs that have been identified in the master plan? Why would we rule out 3.3 acres of public land, which while not big enough for some things, may be a right size for addressing some of those publicly identified needs?
Thank you. I join Member Swenson in her comments on the work plan. Part of the Fraunchu team is a company called Confluence. Those are the, that's the company that we have hired as a city to help with our master planning, a public engagement piece with the park and rec department. So, we've got a first-rate public engagement company on board here to help us flesh out our needs from a park and rec standpoint, and they're also working with the Fraunchu group to engage the citizenry with respect to the Grandview site. If we've got enough confidence in them to use them for our master planning for the parks, we ought to have enough confidence in them to come up with a process that will adequately engage every aspect of the public in looking at what we can do over there at the old public work site, or potentially property around it, depending on what happens there. So, I'd be, I'm comfortable with Exhibit B, the way it looks, the way it's set up, as is Member Swenson. So do we have a motion on this matter?
No.
A second?
Second.
We got a motion in a second to adopt the collaborative development planning agreement between the City of Edina and Fraunchu, Inc. Further discussion?
Yes. I'm not doubting the qualifications of Confluence. What I'm saying is that there's not a robust enough public engagement plan in the scope of services that we're approving tonight. So, what I would recommend alternatively is to table it and go back with a broader scope of services for the community engagement, and whatever we approve, for instance, tonight it says discovery session A and B, so we're approving two sessions of public outreach, that's it. That's the scope of their services. I'm suggesting that more is needed based on the current knowledge base about the facility, and I think Member Bennett has brought up something as well about the timing of it.
Mr. Nundorf, if we're in process here with the work plan as shown, and Confluence or the city discovers that we should have a little bit more public input, is there any prohibition or, well, let me ask it a different way. Can't we modify the scope of work to include more public engagement if we see that as a need?
We certainly could. Our city attorney also anticipated such a thing, so there's a provision in the agreement that allows us to expand the scope. Right now, there's a budget that's included in here as the last exhibit, and it defines the current scope that's written up. By mutual agreement, the parties can expand that or contract it, I can't imagine we'd ever contract it, but certainly that is possible. And I might also mention that one other thing that's not included in this agreement is the city's communication plan for this project. We heard a lot of comments about communication tonight. For this project, we're anticipating applying a similar standard to what we've done on the France Avenue improvements and on the 50th and France parking improvements. So while it's not in agreement between the city and Fraunchu, it is an internal document that we're working on. One of the city's responsibilities in the work plan is to effectively communicate the project and the process. So there's a number of elements that are not included in the Fraunchu contract, press releases, articles, social media posts, posters, mailings, postcards, story in various publications, postcard mailings, guest columns, bag stuffers at local stores, table clings at local restaurants, bag stickers at local retailers in the area, an ongoing message board to promote the process and solicit additional input, not to mention all of our typical city extra, online website, webpage updates, I forgot the other one, Speak Up Edina. So there's a, there is a robust process, but the pieces that I just mentioned really has nothing to do with Fraunchu, it's what the city will do, and that is outlined in the city's work plan.
But we're spending $10,000 on public engagement in this budget, and we're spending $80,000 on Vision Edina?
For the entire community.
For the entire community. But this is for the entire community as well, the outreach.
Fraunchu's spending $110,000.
But the public engagement piece is only $10,000.
Well, and, and I think a very important element of the contract is that the amount that the public ultimately pays depends on the result. So, Your Honor, it may or may not be $110,000. I also want to respond to a modeling on the France Avenue improvements and 50th and France. In both instances, you have really highly motivated populations. You had the business owners along France Avenue engage, but the wider public did not engage so much. At 50th and France, you had business owners in that business association, and they really wanted to engage. We also heard some from employees as the process was nearing its end. But if we look back on both those processes, the attendance was driven by that direct interest, business interest of the property owners adjacent to those areas, and we really didn't see much involvement by the general public at all. So I, I'm not, my, the concerns I raised earlier are not addressed by that model.
All right, any other comment?
So, just based on today's, tonight's theme of public engagement, again, I'm asking my colleagues to consider sending this back for a re-scope, to think more about a robust public engagement, which is what was promised originally with this particular scope of service contract in front of us.
We started this process four years ago with a group of 52 people that voluntarily appeared to represent the interests of the community. I can't begin to think about all of the public engagement that we've had over that four-year period of time to arrive at a point where we said as a council that we're going to be doing something that's consistent with the 2012 Grandview Development Framework and the seven guiding principles. And at this phase of this process, I'm comfortable with the work plan that's been advanced to engage the public. If we think as a council that we're not getting the public input that we want, then I think we can make an adjustment. We may have to pay for it, but that would be okay. But to sit here and think that we haven't had that much public engagement over the last four years is just not accurate, in my opinion. So, any other comment on this? We got a motion in a second to approve the collaborative development agreement as stated?
I'll just add that, you know, we've got basically bullet points in this table, and possibly the answer to our question is, you know, can be just from flushing out what is in the discovery session A, and what is in discovery session B. I know you've got some bullets, but we don't, on what's involved in those, and so, maybe that's the answer to our question. But if in fact, we can expand the public engagement process if we don't feel like it is wide enough, then I'm comfortable with this.
We can. We can expand it if we don't feel like we're getting enough public input.
So, I'm fine with that. I mean, I'm ready to move forward on it. I just, you know, my purpose for bringing up the comment that I brought up is that I want an open mind from all points of view.
All right. We've got a motion in a second to adopt the collaborative development planning agreement. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Parking permit policy and fees. Mr. Nundorf, you have this matter as well?
Yes, this is a follow-up to a previous policy that was implemented in early summer, and this has to do with all the improvements and renovations at the 50th and France parking ramps, which are now substantially complete as of Friday. That was the end of the contractor's work, so they still have a little bit of touch-up to do, but the project is 99.9% finished. When the city made the pledge to move forward with that work, there is also a strong voice to improve the efficiency of parking and to have the employees park in spaces that customers might not want to park in. So we made some pretty substantial changes to our policy at that time, with the promise that we'd see how it went, we'd gauge the success of it, and if we needed to make adjustments, we'd consider that. So throughout the summer, I did hear a lot of comments from the employees, business managers, and some customers. We held an open house about a month ago now to hear comments and suggestions, and there was a couple themes that we heard continually, and those are reflected in this package tonight. The ordinance change that we're suggesting and proposing is to accommodate short-term daily parkers. We've heard from a lot of businesses that sometimes they have special events, temporary employees, that aren't there to buy an annual permit, but they would appreciate the opportunity to park legally by getting daily permits, and so that's something that we're proposing. The other change is in policy, and that is where employees would be allowed to park. In May, we had all the employees move out of the south ramp, with just one exception, and then, based on the comments we heard, and based on the recommendation of Kimmy Horn, our consultants, we're suggesting that we return 40 stalls on the rooftop level of the ramp for employees to use on a first-come, first-served basis, whether you're employee or a customer. But we found that by taking so much of the employee parking out of the south ramp, we've actually started to overtax the center ramp, so we're hoping to find a little bit more balance. So 40 stalls is what we're suggesting there, and that's written up in the package here.
Member Swenson?
One of the reasons I approved all the work and the change in parking is that there'd been the agreement that we were going to charge more for that lower level that's covered, that's leveled unto itself, and now you tell me they don't want to do that. Well, yeah, that makes sense to me, they have to pay it, but that money goes to help them maintain the ramp. So, I have a real problem with only charging $10 a month in that one lower area of the south ramp. You know, I did a study of downtown parking spaces, and granted, a lot of people that work down there make a lot more money, but if you look at incomes, you know, for that, you pay $179 a month for, to $250, $300 a month downtown for parking that's covered, and we're asking them to pay 10? Now, I understand the salaries aren't always comparable, but I think that that one space in that ramp deserves, I feel justified that it deserves more money. So, that's the only part of this that I'm having a struggle with, and so, I'll just see how everyone else feels.
Member Bennett?
Yes, because the numbers were worked with that additional money going to the maintenance, what happens to the formula? The public paid in, funds through the HRA, but where is the matching then? Where's the share that's supposed to be coming from the businesses for the project?
Manager Neil?
So, Councilmember Swenson, the spots that you're talking about are what we call on the back of this, the lower level 80 covered?
Yep.
From the south ramp?
Yep. I mean, it's covered all the time, it has its own entrance, it's not used by any of our residents during the days for daytime hours from 8 to 4. It's prime parking.
And we had that priced at 60 a month initially?
We had a lot of different pricing models originally, but...
I remember 25 maybe being one of them, but...
There's a lot of different models. I think the most recent was, we tested to see if we could do $40 a month for a dedicated reserved spot. There was a little bit of initial interest in that, but as we polled people further and kept asking the question, there were not 80 people that were willing to pony up four times as much as everybody else for that spot.
Is that the number, Bill, that we, that this reaction was based to, was 40 bucks a month for those?
That was my recollection of the last thing that we tested.
Just the comment that they don't want to pay more than 10, well, yeah, I wouldn't want to pay more than 10 either. But, you know, sign me up for that right now, because then I can park there any time of the day, day and night as a resident, I think it'd be a great deal for $120 a year. So, I'm sorry, I don't think it's enough, and I think it should be something else, I get it that they weren't excited about 40 and 80 didn't sign up.
So, a mezzanine level between 15 and 10 would be like 25?
Yeah. Yeah. And then I would be good with the rest of this.
So you're okay with employee parking in covered areas in the center ramp and the north ramp for $10 a month?
Yeah, because it's not a guarantee, it's not a separate entrance. I'd actually think that employees could park on the roof, and that would be the only place, but you've got two-hour employee parking, you've got three-hour employee parking. This lower level is a guaranteed, you know, eight hours of employee parking, and they can stay there after 4:00, and they're not going to get kicked out. So it's not like, they could stay there till 10 o'clock at night if they wanted to, and they wouldn't get kicked out. So they've got this one spot where they can be there 24 hours a day practically for $10 a month. You know, I can't park in front of Prochna on Main, wouldn't do that for half a day.
Member Bennett?
Well, also back to my question, what happens to the formula?
Yeah.
Is the public then paying more for this project than they were paying a year ago?
No, no. The way we structured the finances is that any revenue earned from the parking permits would draw down the cost of the annual operating agreement. So in the past, we budgeted $245,000 each year to plow snow, fix broken doors, shovel the sidewalks, and that type of work. Based on what the businesses told us, they requested that we increase that budget to $450,000. So they were willing to support an additional increase out of their own bottom line, presuming that we also, that what they did not pay for, the employee would pay for. So if we keep the fees where they are, or if we see no net increase in permit revenue, that essentially means that the cost will be shifted not to the city, but to the property owners through the maintenance agreement.
Well, you know, I nitpick because we have more employee parking than we do resident parking, and you break it out in a nice way that makes it look not as bad, but if you have 1,020 sub in lot spaces, which actually is what you have, and you sell 680 permits, if you have everyone who buys a permit parking there, then you have 340 places for residents? I mean, come on, and we're worrying about charging them $10 versus $25 for lower-level parking? You know, they still get the lion's share of the parking in the ramps all combined. You know, and when we go for our next parking study and we need more parking spaces, which I think we are going to find out we need more parking spaces, and we're going to build them, would be my guess, you know, my argument still is, yes, I know they have to park their employees, but if they don't have areas for residents to park, they won't need employees. So I'm trying to be supportive of this, but I think the $10 thing is just garbage.
So we could support a first reading of this and then go back with a $25 mezzanine level? Would that be something you support?
That would be helpful, yeah.
It's not the mezzanine level.
What's the lower level?
No, 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 I mean mezzanine level of pricing between 15 and 10. Intermediate level, whatever, another level of pricing.
It's like the lady at Young Quinlan in the elevator, when you go halfway up between the first and the second floor, she says mezzanine.
Another tier of pricing.
I didn't know what the mezzanine pricing was, so...
If that's the directive, we can certainly go back and test that.
Well, test it. I mean, they're going to say they don't like it, because who wants to vote for increasing their rates?
If you have a preference on where you want to set it... Why wouldn't we just approve this on a first-reading basis with that adjustment?
That'd be fun.
Sure.
Going back and talking to them about it isn't going to result in any change. So let's, if we endorse Member Swenson's analysis, let's pass it on a first-reading basis that way, and then Bill can go back and tell them what's in the offing.
I'll move that.
So what is the number?
Moved in second that we charge $25 for employee parking in the lower level of the south ramp.
Who seconded that motion?
I did.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there a separate permit for the lower level of the south ramp?
There currently is not, but we could do that. It would be a little bit more administrative work, but we can, right now, we order one-color permits, we could order two different colors of permits.
Okay, so one color of permit would allow them to park in the lower level of the south ramp? That said, they could park anywhere they wanted to?
Yes. That lower-level permit.
The lower-level permit means they could also park in the rest of the employee parking, right?
That's right.
That's correct.
It's just that the other employee parking category cannot park in the lower level of the south ramp.
Correct.
They could at their peril.
Well, yeah, exactly, exactly.
I mean, we've got a guy in the Lunds parking lot that's like the parking czar, and, you know, you know when you park there, if you don't go and buy something at Lunds, and then you go over to Bredsmith, you're going to be in deep yogurt. So, you know, it just seems to me that we have to, we have to remember that we're building these ramps for a combination of employees and residents.
Shoppers.
Shoppers, yes, thank you, that's a much better word. Thank you, ma'am.
If I could offer one comment about the pricing structure, in my opinion, I think $20 is probably going to be adequate. Right now, our expenses are, yeah, they're, well, they're, yeah, we subsidize all the parking there, but it was interesting regarding the pricing, I heard equally from employees and managers and business owners that they were very sensitive to the pricing. It wasn't just the employees or just anybody else, so...
You know what, it's not that we made $25 every parking permit. The other parking permits are still $10. They've been $10 for years. They can park in three different ramps, including the top of the south ramp for $10. So I haven't taken away their choices. I've just said if you want to park in this lower level that's covered all the time, that has a separate entrance, that will have a space for you, then you have to pay more.
This is a first reading.
It's guns and butter.
Member Swenson may back off on second reading.
Yes.
Probably not.
All right. We got a motion and a second to approve the parking permit policy and fees embodied in ordinance 2014-19 with the change in the lower level of the south ramp, notation being made by Member Swenson, that the cost for parking there for employees between 8:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon will be $25 a month instead of $10 a month. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And then finally, resolution 2014-113, resolution accepting various grants and donations. The motion is second to accept these donations and grants. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And donations this period are the Edina Police Department, Edina Crime Fund, officer training expense reimbursement, and there may have been one for the Edina Arts Center, but there's nothing there. All right, now. Correspondence and petitions, anything other than what we had on the dais this evening? Thank you. Aviation noise update. Member Bennett or Manager Neil?
Actually, I'm the one that went to the meeting.
All right, Member Swenson?
So we, there was a public input meeting at the NOC building last week that I attended. There were only two speakers. What I did discover is that the residents of Richfield probably don't understand what happened, and we received blame for stopping our nav, and I did not get up and speak at the time, but I did discover there's definitely a big disconnect with what they believe happened and what actually happened. The next meeting, quarterly meeting for public input, will be at Richfield, and I will announce that before. I think it'd be really good if we could get some residents to go, and I'm on task now to go to all the NOC meetings, so I will be there as your representative.
I received notification of a meeting that's been set for the next few weeks, I think, and I don't have that with me, I guess, so do you...
There was a CIP meeting last night, or actually tonight, it's taking place tonight, and notice was, one of our residents put it on Nextdoor, MSP Fair Skies was notifying people of it, so obviously not a meeting that one of us could attend. But important, and thank you, Member Swenson, for being at that meeting. I was at the NOC Cities, NOC Communities meeting. There was some discussion about an FAA presentation at the next NOC meeting, which will be followed the day after our second meeting in November. FAA will be presenting. There have been some questions that have been submitted. The runway use system, which would disperse air flights more over a broader area and also change up the directions of departures, that is not being used, and it's hoped that there will be more in-depth explanation at that meeting. There also is some very good correspondence sent out from Councilmember Palmasano's office in Minneapolis that was drafted by Minneapolis City staff. I am going to be asking for permission to share that with other council members. It gives a very good explanation both of the lack of use of the runway use system and what that has meant, but some other causes for a factual basis to the increased perception of noise this summer.
All right. Anything, Manager Neil, on that topic?
Just to say, I would expect that we will receive the results of this summer, I guess, late summer noise testing by MAC. We expect to receive those results later this month, and we'll report them at the council's first meeting in December.
I'm just looking for the email that I got from one of our residents, I believe, on this. I thought it was a meeting on the 8th of November. I'll look here anyway as we go through the agenda. Mayor and council comments, members break.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
Nothing.
Member Bennett?
Nothing else.
Member Brendel?
We're on a roll, Mary.
We are. We are, I'm trying to see if I can break the tide, but I can't think of anything, so nothing tonight.
All right, I'm not going to mess with it. I'll keep looking here. Manager Neil?
All right, I hate to do this, but, all right, I'm going to be very quick. We believe we're going to have a freshly renovated liquor store reopen tomorrow at 50th and France. Please stop by. We have the Wooddale Valley View Dream Workshop scheduled for Saturday, this Saturday, at 8:30 at the Senior Center. Two of the larger Vision Edina community workshops are scheduled also later this week, Wednesday, the 5th, at the Senior Center from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., and Thursday, the 6th, at Southdale Library from 1:30 to 3:00. And that's all I've got for you.
Good, all right. If there's nothing further, we'll adjourn the council meeting and do some quick work with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Council meeting stands adjourned. Calling to order the meeting of the HRA for November 3rd. Roll call, please.
Member Brendel? Commissioner Brendel, sorry. Commissioner Sprague?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Chair Haveland?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda.
So what?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to adopt the form of meeting agenda. Any further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. We've got some minutes from September 2nd, 2014. We've got a motion and a second on those. Discussion, all those in favor of adopting those HRA minutes for September 2nd, 2014, say aye. 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 Opposed, say nay. Carried. And one action item.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to authorize the retention of engineering services for the lighting and landscape work on France Avenue. Same matter we had in front of the council that Member Sprague had a few questions on. Any further discussion? All those in favor of authorizing those services, say aye. 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 Opposed, say nay. Carried. Any other business for the HRA? HRA stands adjourned. That's pretty good, though.